So, good evening. I'm going to call into session the combined open meeting of June 16th, 2021, and it is 5:30 PM. And I will ask the chairs of Northborough, Southborough, and Regional to call their meetings into order, and if we can do it one at a time. We'll start with Northborough.
Okay. I'd like to call into order Northborough School Committee. It is Wednesday, June 16th at 5:32. Present in person is Keith LaBelle and myself, Erin Tagliaferri. Joining us remotely is Lauren Bailey-Jones, Kelly Gannett, and Joan Frank.
We'll move to Southborough.
I will call the Southborough School Committee meeting to order, and it's June 16th, 2021, at 5:33 PM. And we have present Jen Primack, Kim Tollender, Katara Martin, and remotely, we have Roger Challen and Kamali Omeili.
I'll call the Regional School Committee into order at 5:33. Present are Kathleen Howland, Karen Ayers, Chris Covino, Kathleen Polichko, and myself, Paul Desmond. Remotely, we have Joan Frank and Dan Kalenda. That's it.
And lastly, I will call Superintendent, Superintendentcy Union Three to order. And we have Keith LaBelle, Joan Frank participating remotely, and Lauren Bailey participating remotely from Northborough, Roger Challen from Southborough participating remotely, Katara Martin in person, Jen Primack in person. And at this time, I will ask for officers to be nominated for the Union Superintendentcy Number Three. And this year, it is Northborough's elected officers. And we need a motion for the Chair of the Superintendentcy Union Number Three from Northborough.
For me?
Any, anyone, anyone can make a motion from the Superintendentcy Union Three.
If my mind does, the motion come from Northborough also?
It does not have to.
Greg, I'd like to motion that Joan Frank be named the Chair of the Superintendentcy Union Number Three.
Alright, so on the table, we have a motion for Joan Frank. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Alright, since there is no discussion, we will take a roll call vote. Keith LaBelle?
Yes.
Lauren Bailey?
Yes.
Hang on, let me find my notes here.
Yes.
And Roger Challen?
I vote yes.
Katara Martin?
Yes.
Jen Primack?
Yes.
And then Joan Frank?
Yes.
And Joan, do you accept the nomination?
Yes, and it is a great honor, and I appreciate the support from the school committee members. It was a surprise. So, yeah, thank you very much, and I look forward to working with both Northborough K-8 and the Southborough K-8 members this year.
And now Joan, actually, we will turn it over for nominations for Vice Chair and Secretary. Again, the slated officers are from Northborough.
So this time, I'd like to entertain a motion for Vice Chair of Supervisory Union Number Three. We have Lauren Bailey-Jones or Keith LaBelle. I'd like to nominate Keith LaBelle for Vice Chair. Are there any other nominations? At this time, I'd like to close out the nominations, and it comes from the, for the Vice Chair, it will be voted by the three members of Northborough and the three members of the Union from Southborough. Greg, I'll need help on the three Union members from Southborough?
So we have Roger Challen, Katara Martin, and Jen Primack.
Jen?
Yes.
Roger?
I vote yes.
And is it Kamali?
Katara.
No, Katara.
Katara, Katara?
Yes.
Lauren Bailey-Jones?
Yes.
Keith LaBelle?
Yes.
Joan Frank, yes, and congratulations Keith, and I look forward to working with you in this, as Vice Chair. At this time, I'd like to take a motion for Secretary of Supervisory Union Number Three.
I move to, like, Lauren Bailey-Jones as Secretary of this Superintendentcy Union?
A second.
A motion made by Keith LaBelle. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And I don't think we have any other members that are left. I would like to close out the nominations, and now we will go through the roll call vote. Jen?
Yes.
For Lauren Bailey-Jones as Secretary of the Supervisory Union Number Three?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Roger?
I vote yes.
Katara?
Yes. Yes.
Katara, Mark?
Yes.
They're having a tough time hearing you.
Can you hear me, Joan? Yeah, yes.
Hard time hearing. Okay, Keith LaBelle?
Yes.
Lauren Bailey-Jones?
Yes.
And myself, yes, and it's unanimous. And Lauren, congratulations on your new position as Secretary of Supervisory Union Number Three. Look forward to working with you this year. This time, I'd like to hand over the agenda then to sensitive chair between the Union Chair and the Region Chair. The Region Chair will be doing what I believe the agenda for tonight's combined meeting. Hand it over to Mr. Paul Desmond.
Thank you, Joan. That brings us to our second, our first agenda item, which is action on the minutes. I'd like to entertain a motion on action on the combined open meeting minutes of March 17th, 2021 by all four committees, as well as a motion on the joint open meeting minutes of the Policy Development Subcommittee for Northborough, Southborough, and the Region. For the Region?
So moved.
Moved by Paul Budka?
Second.
Seconded by Kathleen Polichko. Southborough?
I'll entertain a motion, similar motion. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Jen Primack, seconded by Kim Tollender, and Northborough?
So moved for Northborough?
Second.
Moved by Keith, seconded by Erin. All in favor? Or any discussion first?
May I entertain a motion from the Supervisory Union Number Three?
Alright, thank you.
So moved?
So moved by Keith?
I'll second it. Katara?
Seconded by Katara.
And now, any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote for the Region. Let's go in person first, and then we'll go online. Kathleen Howland?
Yes.
Karen Ayers?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Paul Budka?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Kathleen Polichko?
Yes.
Paul Desmond, a yes. Dan Kalenda?
Any votes?
Joan Frank?
Yes.
Did I miss anyone? Alright, I think we're good. Southborough?
Okay, we'll take a roll call vote. Rod, Roger?
I vote yes.
Kamali?
Yes.
Kim Tollender?
Yes.
Jen Primack?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Northborough?
Lauren Bailey-Jones?
Yes.
Kelly Gannett?
I'm staying because I can't hear the motions, so I'm sorry.
Joan Frank?
Yes.
Keith LaBelle?
Yes.
And myself, Erin Tagliaferri, yes.
Roll call vote for Supervisory Union Number Three. Jen Primack?
Yes.
Roger Challen?
I vote yes.
Katara Martin?
Yes.
Keith LaBelle?
Yes.
Lauren Bailey-Jones?
Yes.
Myself, yes, and Kathleen Ayers for Supervisory Union Number Three.
Okay. That brings us to our second agenda item, which is the NSPAC presentation.
Mr. Chair, quick question.
Sure.
Perhaps it's for, maybe, maybe Mr. Martin, who knows. Is it going through these mics to them, or is it just, okay, it's?
That is the speaker in the microphone.
Okay, so we just need to?
Okay.
Speak up. Okay. Thank you.
So the microphone is just to pick up audio, so you're not, so you actually can?
You do have to project to that microphone as well, though.
Good evening. My name is Alyssa DeGon. For those of you who don't know me, I'm the President of NSPAC, which is the Northborough-Southborough Special Education Parents Advisory Council. It's a mouthful.
Do you have a mic? Is it on?
You need to, you need to hold it.
Do you want me to hold it up?
Is it live, Terry?
Do you want me to keep talking so you can see if you can hear me? Is that better?
That's better.
Okay. Good evening. Okay, so once again, Alyssa DeGon, President of NSPAC. Thank you all for having me this evening. It's nice to see everybody in person, of course. So, we just had our elections, and I, this, I am pleased to announce that I am going to be President again this coming year. And I've also added the role of Recording Secretary. Actually, all four of us served in this past year, and we're, I'm really pleased that we're all, this whole group is going to be serving again this following year, as we had so many goals and things we wanted to do, and obviously, as with everything, it was put on hold this year, so now we can work together. So Johanna Shaner continues to join us. She's now Vice President and Technology Officer. Your very own Kim Tollender wears two hats. She will be Vice President and Communications Coordinator, and Lisa Jackman will continue as our Treasurer. We really would like some Northborough President, presence as well, so hopefully this year, we'll be able to get somebody a little more involvement on the Northborough side, so we can really represent everyone well. So currently, we have 831 students and 341 students, sorry, 831 students in IEPs and 341 on 504 plans. The goal of the NSPAC is to support families in a variety of ways. We set up ongoing educational programs. One of our biggest goal, one of our biggest roles is to work with Student Support Services and sort of be a conduit between what our families want and what they're looking for, and what the district is providing, and making sure that communication is happening. Things move pretty quickly, and there's a lot going on. We also have a network of families that we help to navigate everything that comes along with a special, special needs family and students. And we also sometimes partner with other CPACs in order to put together events. This past year, even though it was an unusual year, we were still able to basically move all of our in-person events to virtual events, so it didn't hold us back. We still ran our annual Basic Rights Presentation, the Federation for Children with Special Needs focused on understanding the IEP. We had a speaker series. We had a young man named Zach Smith, who is on the autism spectrum. He went to school in Westboro. He graduated from Worcester State University, and he gave wonderful anecdotes and stories about his experiences, which brought tears to eyes. It was wonderful. We had Mass Advocates for Children speak about special education during COVID-19. There is a local attorney who specializes in special education. We had her speak with families, I believe, twice over the year. And we had Special Needs Financial Planning Seminar as well. We have general meetings where we have the district representatives and families come together and hear what's going and ask their questions directly, and then we hold virtual parent coffees. Last year, we were unable to hold our Go the Distance Awards at all, because it just, you know, it was supposed to be in April, so we couldn't pull anything together. So this year, we were so pleased to be able to put together our event. We had over 100 virtual participants, which was incredible. We had the most ever nominees. We had 56 award recipients. And since this year was so taxing and challenging in so many ways, we felt it was appropriate to allow families to nominate a second person if they wanted to in the form of an honorable mention. So we had 26 honorable mentions. The Unified Singing Club, led by Lori Diamond and Felicia Ruttiglano, put together an amazing, amazing performance. It was recorded beforehand and professionally put together, so it sounded amazing. We also had a student spotlight by Andrew Roberts, who's an Algonquin student, who has, he has helped emcee the awards in the past, but we felt this year, with the possible technical challenges, we didn't want to put that on him. We actually had a professional emcee named Michelle Roberts, no relation to Andrew, emcee the event for us. And then, in order to have a more personal touch, we hand-delivered all of the awards to all the faculty and everyone who won at their schools, and, you know, we were able to actually feel the love with the teachers, which was really nice. We also had another first this year, which you probably saw as you drove in this evening, our signs lining at least the route, one of the entrances to the high school. We had our first fundraiser. We wanted to end the year with a thank you to all of our teachers, staff, and administrators, and medical advisory team. And we thought, what better way than to have a lawn sign fundraiser? We had 135 signs purchased, which was incredible, because we put it together literally overnight, and we didn't have much long-term promotion going on. So we're really happy that we have a little something to start off next year to be able to run some nice programs for our families. We also had a little bit of press this year. The Community Advocate and mysouthborough.com covered our Go the Distance Awards, our fundraiser, and it's, it's always nice to have our name out in the general community to spread awareness. Moving forward, we will continue working closely with the School District and School Committee. All you wonderful folks here. We want to increase engagement with families. We want to work collaboratively with the district to continue improving education with our, with the families. We're currently running our annual NSPAC survey. It's still going, but as per what seems to be the, the main topics, year, year in and year out, it still seems to be coming up strong. The families are most interested in executive function and ADD, in support of ADD, social emotional awareness and dyslexia. They seem to sort of be at the top three areas that we, we see as being most relevant with our families. And as far as the upcoming ESTER funding and where the Student Support Services Program is looking, we, we are in alignment with them, that these are really important areas for them to be focusing on, and we're in full support of that. We'll continue to distribute our NSPAC newsletter to our, our database, speaker series, meetings. More to come as we take a little break this summer and then start planning for the next year. We also want to extend a thank you to our School Committee liaisons, Jessica Devine, Kelly Gannett, and Kathleen Howland, and a special thank you to Roger Challen. These individuals were present at all of our meetings with the district this year, which was very unusual. We don't typically meet with the district almost every month, but we had obviously so much going on this year that we felt it, in order to keep communication going, we needed to meet as often as possible. And so we really appreciate having the School Committee be in those meetings and understanding the challenges and everything we're, we're working with. We also want to put together a special thank you for Greg Martno, who was also in many of those meetings. Thank you. And of course, Student Support Services, Marie Allen, Deb Lemieux, Erica Mathieu, Kate Clark, and Jennifer, Jennifer Henry, for all of their support this year. That's it. Connect with us. We have a newsletter, Facebook page, website. Johanna has promised to make it even better this year and ask technology officers to better. And we'll have some events coming up next year. Thank you, and I'm here for any questions.
Thank you, Alyssa. That was excellent. Any questions, comments? Kathleen?
Kathleen?
I don't, do I need a microphone? I just wanted to say of the three years plus that I've served on the school committee, this year's Going the Distance Award was the most enjoyable time. I think that it was a celebration of ability in disability. I think Ann Aliso should get a scholarship to go to Berkeley. She's just such an amazing artist. And, you know, it just celebrates the fact of, of inclusionary practices, and particularly the way that music elevated. But it was so heartfelt and so beautifully thought up. It really was my favorite event ever. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathleen?
So first of all, thank you so much for that fundraiser, because I have to say, you know, I haven't been in this school for 14 months, and so when I drove in, I was like, what a great idea. I wonder who did that?
You could thank him for the idea.
It was a great idea.
Super conference, make it happen.
Excellently executed, and I thought to myself, I was like, you know, I would love to thank the medical advisory team. I mean, I don't even have kids in the school, but I was listening to them for my own personal life. So, so I'm so glad that you did that. That was absolutely excellent. A question about your, your membership. You represent everybody who's on an IEP or 504, like, they don't have to have any kind of, they don't have to, like, join in anyway, right?
No, 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 no. And I mean, that's, that's an interesting question. We, we don't have acts, you know, the school can't give us, here are the 800 families, go, you know, talk to them. So that's sort of been a challenge for us to, to reach them all. Some families don't necessarily want to be out there with, hey, my kid has something going on publicly, so they don't want to be on a Facebook group hearing things. So we thought about that, and we came up with this newsletter database. So Marie Allen helped us. She sent out a one call to specifically the sped families. Do you want to hear from NSPAC? Sign up. So we can reach families, you know, privately and tell them what's going on at any time. But there's no membership fee. There's no, you don't have to do anything. You can, you can come to an event once and ever again. You can just read our newsletter and not do anything. You know, it's, it's meant to be what you need it to be.
Okay, great. And then, this is probably a question for Keith, because I'm sure you have it off the top of your head. What, what is the enrollment in Northborough K-8 and Southborough K-8 these days? And I put Keith on the spot because you do bussing.
For, what are we up to? Greg, do you know that?
You know, hang on one second.
1538? Don't judge my?
Yeah, so in Southborough, enrollments, 1141, and then 1538.
Alright, thank you.
Other questions, comments?
I just, I just have a, a agenda.
I'd like to thank you all too, because my heart, because my heart's alive when I saw all this.
Thank you. That's awesome.
And then, on behalf of the district, I just want to thank NSPAC for its partnership and advocacy for students. I think that the commitment, the dedication was very visible this year. It's always been visible, but I think it's been more important than ever. So I extend my thank you and my gratitude on behalf of the school district. It was very much appreciated.
Thank you very much, Alyssa. Appreciate your being here.
Roger has a question.
Go ahead, Roger.
Thank you, Kelly. Where did Alyssa go? I can see her on the screen now. So?
I'm here.
Just a couple, just a couple of comments. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
I guess least of, well, I appreciate the undeserved recognition for my meeting attendance. Honestly, I found the meetings to be organized, informative, very useful. And I applaud Alyssa, your team, and Marie Allen, you know, for these meetings. I learned a lot, and I'm very helpful. I'm, I couldn't hear very well, unfortunately, as, as Alyssa mentioned, the audio's a little difficult. But going, coming out of this year, which was certainly unusual and challenging, and there's probably a lot of other adjectives, and looking forward to going into next year, and if, if I missed this on, on the presentation, I'm sorry, but you have two or three? And if I missed this on the presentation, I'm sorry, but do you have two or three kind of challenges that you think are at the top of your list in going into next year, or going into this year, I guess?
I wouldn't say there's anything, I mean, it's hard to say because last, can you hear me speaking now, Roger?
A little better, yes. Thank you.
Okay. So I was touching on the fact that the three major areas of concern that we continue to hear about from our families are about executive function, social emotional awareness, and dyslexia. So things like making sure all the students are screened in kindergarten, but then also, okay, great, once they're screened, if they need services, making sure that, once that's now in the sped department, making sure that they have adequate training and resources and staff to do all the proper dyslexia work that we need. For NSPAC, it's also, you know, we hear a lot of these needs from families. We continue to communicate, work on communication between the district and families. That's sort of a constant thing. Things move pretty quickly on the district side, but, you know, sometimes the families don't get the information immediately, or sometimes it's just good for them to know that information is coming. I'm looking at Kim.
Any other questions from the remote folks? Kamali does.
Yes, this is Kamali. I have a question. Alyssa, thank you for that presentation. We did receive your PowerPoint ahead of time, so that was really helpful. Thank you. A question I have is, are there any programs, maybe they've been scheduled in the past or you're planning to do them in the future, are there any programs to help families with children that are in the classroom with kids that are experiencing those top three areas, helping them to understand that there is what that is, and how they can be, how they can help their children who are not experiencing that be able to partner with their peers, you know? And I guess, like, you know, it changes over time, so if you're a, you know, second grader versus how you discuss that with a sixth and seventh grader, you know, you would change the language and the skills that you help them to be able to understand that their friend or their classmate has this challenge, and this is what it's called, this is why it's occurring, and how you can still partner and be peers with each other.
Do you mean, like, across the, like, for individual students, how it's taught, how it's explained to classmates, or to, or more of a general, like, at a certain age, by the way, some kids have XYZ challenges?
Both. So just to, for example, maybe there's been a meeting or workshop where you've invited parents that are not part of the IEP program, they're not part of 504 plans, but they're all, all their children are in classrooms with a mix of those students, and they just might want to know how to operate as such.
So we have not done anything like that, but that's a really, that's a wonderful idea. I can say from personal experience, my son has autism, and in earlier grades, this happened a couple of years in a row. By late September, I got a call from a teacher saying, do you mind if we kind of tell the class, you know, why this and that is happening? Because they're a little bit puzzled by, you know, how he's reacting to certain things. And I was really, really happy about that, because, you know, the last thing I want to do is have my kid feel more alienated because his peers aren't understanding his tantrum, or, you know, singing, or whatever's going on. But I, so I know it does happen sometimes for some students with the parents, okay, as sort of a one-on-one, but as far as a general workshop for the community, that's a really, that's a really good idea. I love that idea. Because we never want to, we don't want our group to feel exclusive, like you're saying, like, oh, well, you know, I don't, my kid's not disabled enough for me to attend something, or I, you know, even some families may have relatives with disabilities, and they can still learn information from us, even if it doesn't pertain to their immediate family. So that's a great idea. I see Kim taking notes, so I like that. Thank you.
Okay, great. I would, I've been in that experience where, and I think that would be helpful for myself and other parents to have that kind of information to help our children put a name, or, you know, understand how to, you know, be a bit more emotional here and empathetic to what their peers are experiencing. So thanks.
Keith, anyone else? Thanks a lot, Alyssa. Brings us to the strategic plan update.
Yes, so don't move. So try to speak loudly enough so the mic can pick up my voice. So first of all, thank you for the opportunity to present an update on Vision 2026. It's hard to believe that one year ago, we were actually presenting our ideas and presenting the plan to the committees. And this evening, I'm very excited to share the progress that we've made this year. As we discussed last year when presenting the plan, the plan is not a static document that sits on a shelf. It is a dynamic document that is a living, breathing set of goals and action steps that we continually revisit. And this year is a perfect example of how you can have a plan with action steps, but oftentimes, you might be shifted in a different direction. With that said, I think it's really important to talk about our priorities this year. As we began this year, our priorities really centered around focusing on our students, faculty, and staff, safety, health, and well-being as a result of the pandemic. But in the beginning of the year, we also talked as a leadership team about the need to think beyond the pandemic, that the pandemic was going to be a finite period of time, and eventually, we would move beyond. I think we talked about how we can balance our time and energy on longer-term strategies while still making sure that we stay in tune to students' health, safety, and well-being. As a result of the strategy, we've made a lot of progress. I think that toward the action steps, we moved the needle on achieving the five strategic objectives. And what I'm most proud of, though, is our work with students and having a relationship-centered approach. And I believe we are well-positioned to continue the work in the fall of '21. I also want to acknowledge that the work of implementing a strategic plan is a collective effort. It's not the responsibility of any one person. It takes a team. And I think the strategic plan really has been a place where we can all row in the same direction and work on the same goals. And just want to acknowledge, you know, educators, principals, school leaders, central office staff for their work this year around this plan. So just a summary of kind of our guiding principles. So our vision really is guided around the portrait of a graduate, and what knowledge and skills and attributes do we want our graduates to leave Algonquin with? We want our students to be critical and creative thinkers, collaborators, healthy and balanced, growth-oriented, socially and civically engaged, and excellent communicators. And we also have our core values of integrity, equity, empathy, perseverance, inclusive, inclusivity, and respect. And although simple, we do have our mission of educate, inspire, and challenge. Educating all students, helping all students find a spark, and challenging students to get to the next level. So we launched the year with really thinking about how will we organize to accomplish our goals. Obviously, in a pandemic, the way we organize and the way we work was much different. But this was a key question that we asked ourselves as a district. To meet the five strategic objectives, empowering learners, equity of opportunity, health and healthy and balanced learners, educator learning and leadership, and lastly, finance and operations to support teaching and learning. So this evening, I'm pleased to share with you some highlights, successes, and next steps, and we'd be happy to answer any questions. So at this point, I will turn it over to Dr. Reinhorn to talk about accomplishments with empowering learners.
In the area of empowering learners, well, so first, I think it's important to remember that we're working on a six-year plan. And so with everything we're working on, where there's accomplishments, there's always still work to do. So it's often the beginning of the work. One of the things that was an accomplishment was working from our portrait of a graduate attributes, and then working backwards to say, if this is where we want to end up, developing a theory of action that says, then what should we be, what should we see teachers and students saying and doing in the classrooms and in the schools in order to accomplish that goal? And we compared that also with Desi's look force at different grade levels and different disciplines. We also continue to review teaching and learning resources as part of the budgeting process, and to work on further developing the curriculum review process to allow for systematic and cyclical review of the curriculum, instruction, and resources. And more specifically, in the area of history and social science, we have continued to work with the relatively new curriculum frameworks, using that to look at the resources that we are using to achieve those standards. And in the area of, at the level of the middle school, making decisions about purchasing some new resources to support that work.
So in terms of the next level of work for next year, I think one of the acknowledgements I want to make is that we made a conscious decision not to use this year as a year to collect baseline data. We felt it would not accurately communicate a starting place. So a lot of the work that we did this year was really setting the foundation for being able to collect baseline data in the fall. And one of those areas is really looking at how our teachers collaborate and work together in professional learning organizations. So that is something that we have spent a lot of time looking at. We want to systemize how we collaborate and how we work together as educators, but the baseline assessment is something we are going to launch in the fall. We are also looking at how do we inventory and assess innovative learning practices? So we have pockets of innovation happening throughout our 10 schools, and we really want to look at, you know, what are those opportunities, what are those successes, and how do we make those happen more often in our classroom? We also are looking to expand opportunities for our students to engage in digital literacy and computer science standards. Julie Doyle and our team are looking for opportunities to expand computer science and digital literacy experiences for our students K through 12. And lastly, really looking at developing system-wide agreements on what data will be collected to monitor all students. We have a lot of data that we collect on students in terms of academic and social emotional progress, but it's not always systematic. So we're looking to try to create dashboards and make sure that our teachers have access to the data in real time, and an easy way to make informed instructional decisions.
In terms of the strategic objective, equity of opportunity, this really builds off of the presentation we just had from Alyssa, and making sure that we are providing all students access to challenging culturally responsive learning experiences and meeting their individual needs. And data is a key to that, along with multi-tiered systems of support. And so we established a committee to lead this work, which will be an ongoing committee as we move forward. In order to develop and to move towards access to data, as Greg just mentioned about data dashboards and being able to have interactive, easy access to the information, we started a partnership with a consulting group called the Analytics Platform that works with many Massachusetts districts, and have done some work to begin to have some prototypes of dashboards this year. Again, it was not the year, as Greg said, for baseline data and for pushing that out to teachers. So we did a lot of work with teacher leaders and school leaders to be working on prototypes that will be able to move forward in the coming year. We, as part of that work, were determining in some areas, what is the current, what are the current assessments, and some future assessments, that we should be able to say all, we should be able to see the data for all students on those assessments? So getting some consistency and coherence in the data we're collecting. Again, building off of what we were hearing from Alyssa, we spent time this year examining the options and identifying a dyslexia screener, actually, two tools, because we are going to be implementing from pre-K to grade two dyslexia screeners, and we were able to secure grant funding to pay for the screeners and for the implementation, which will be beginning in the fall. And finally, a large strand of our work and a significant investment was made this year with leadership from Rotoweb and a team of teacher leaders in the area of culturally responsive teaching and combating unconscious bias. And we focused on windows and mirrors, and had sustained professional learning throughout the year in this area.
So in terms of our next level of work, so we have a committee focused on multi-tiered systems of supports, and really creating a plan for implementation, and thinking about what resources, tools, and people do we need in order to successfully implement MTSS. As Dr. Reinhorn just said, we are moving from a identification to an implementation phase, and we will be implementing a universal dyslexia screening tool, pre-K through two in the fall. We're also looking at to assess and expand our inclusionary practices, to determine the impact on student learning. So we talk a lot about inclusionary practices across our 10 schools, but really taking time to assess what those are, and to make sure that we are implementing evidence-based practices around inclusion. In terms of culturally responsive pedagogy, we're continuing that work. You know, we are more diverse than ever, and really making sure that our teacher's aware of different cultures, different religions, so that they can support students where they are. And lastly, really looking to continue to assess units of study and curriculum resources and instructional practices to ensure attention to diversity, equity, and inclusion.
For our third strategic objective, healthy and balanced learners, which is about prioritizing social, emotional, and physical well-being of students, we identified and established a healthy and balanced learners committee. And I think it's important in this area to realize that one of our biggest accomplishments was what Greg started this presentation with, which was attending to the health and well-being of our students and our families and our faculty throughout this year. And so that is where a tremendous amount of energy went, which was not written into our goals, because we didn't anticipate the pandemic. But on top of that, we also prioritized a district-wide coordinator of SEL, which, social emotional learning, which was added to the FY22 budget, and we are in the hiring process right now, which is very exciting. We also planned for the implementation phase of the Start Time Initiative to support healthy sleep habits among our students, which we are excited about as well.
So in terms of next steps for healthy and balanced learners, one of the goals is to develop a shared understanding of a framework for SEL. So we have a lot of great programs across our 10 schools, but we really want to develop a shared understanding, a coherent approach. But we really want to develop a shared understanding, a coherent approach to the work. We also want to explore effective approaches to health education. So Mary Ellen Duggan's work has been amazing this year in terms of focusing on the health and safety of our students. I think she's going to have much more free time to focus on this area than she has had this year. So we're really excited about that. And we have a team of nurses and health educators really looking at, thinking about what materials will support a consistent and comprehensive approach to health education. And lastly, really looking to collect that baseline data about students' social emotional health and physical well-being. This is something we have prepared for the fall. And I think it will be really important for us, A, exiting the pandemic to see where students are, but also establishing baseline data. So we have, we'll be able to collect longitudinal data over time to see if we're making progress in this area.
In terms of educator learning and leadership, what a year for growth and learning and leadership. I can't say enough about our educators and our school leaders and district leaders and the steep learning curve that they were on and the tremendous amount of learning that was accomplished. And our students, I know that's not part of this goal, but they were right there with us. The, in addition to that pandemic-related learning that took place, we spent time looking at the teaching and learning team and at a district level revisiting the roles and drafting a, or some revisions to the organizational structure that we are going to be presenting in the fall to the school committees. Principals and central office leaders spent a significant amount of time engaging with each other and with their faculties in the school improvement planning process, which allowed for and facilitated the alignment of school improvement plans to the strategic plan and for connections across schools, which the school leaders and the faculty are very excited about. We also, another accomplishment was working on implementing our educator evaluation roadmap and revisiting some of those processes and looking for places where we can improve with a focus on using educator evaluation to support development and growth of our educators.
In terms of next level work or next steps, one of the things we want to do is develop systematic strategic professional learning pathways for our educators that are aligned to the strategic plan, school improvement plans, as well as educator goals. And again, we're trying to build this through line from educator goals, school improvement plan to the strategic plan. I think that we have had some successful pathways developed this year. I think Julie Doyle developed a great pathway with Greg Galiluk, which was part of a six-hour PD. And some other pathways that the professional development team developed were outstanding. We're also trying to provide opportunities for districts and school leaders to further to develop their skill of observation and providing feedback to educators. This is work that we started pre-pandemic, but we put on the pause because of the pandemic. And we are excited about getting back to that work.
In the area of finance and operations to support teaching and learning, with Keith LaBoy and Becky Pellegrino leading the way in these areas, we engaged in dialogue with town administrators to be part of short-term and long-term planning. And we are in the process of submitting a statement of interest through the MSBA, the Massachusetts School Building Authority, to renovate the NEARI Elementary School. Along with that statement of interest, we've conducted a facility conditions assessment with an outside consultant to examine the needs at NEARI Elementary School, completed energy efficiency projects. And the, in the technology realm, we adopted and implemented a new student information system with Julie Doyle leading us in this work, which was a tremendous amount of work if there had not been a pandemic. So we adopted Power School and we implemented one-to-one devices for our students. We finally partnered with North Running Transportation to implement Here Comes the Bus, our GPS routing software as part of improving efficiency and parent access to real-time data.
So just before we move on to the slide, I just want to thank Becky Pellegrino and Keith LaBoy and also Julie Doyle. Some large-scale projects moved forward in the pandemic. And they did an outstanding job leading that work. And I just want to also mention Julie Doyle in terms of her implementation of Power School. I know many of you have been part of large-scale implementation projects. This was a large-scale implementation project that touched every aspect of our organization in terms of student data and information. And the technology team did outstanding job. So next steps really identify systematic strategy to increase energy efficiencies and decrease costs. And we've made some progress with that in areas of solar. But also looking at expanding our solar program across our nine remaining schools. We want to also complete a needs assessment of each of our school facilities. We did complete a needs assessment of NEARI Elementary School. It yielded great information for us to make good decisions. We're also looking to complete systematic energy audits across our three districts. We've done a lot of work. I just want to acknowledge Mike Gorman for his work at Algonquin Regional High School. He's been an early adopter of a lot of these energy efficiency projects. And we're using his expertise to move those forward in our other two districts. We're excited to implement Start Time. So we went from planning to implementation. So we're very excited about that implementation phase. And it's been, I think, I think seven years or plus. We're very excited about that. And then, you know, developing a comprehensive plan to update Algonquin Regional High School athletic facilities. There's some immediate needs in terms of athletic facilities. And we have done some preliminary work, but putting a more formal proposal together for the school committee. So in summary, the next steps are to finalize our action plan for 2122. We've had, put together a great draft document. The leadership team is meeting over the summer to finalize that. And our goal is to plan, to share that plan with the combined school committees at its September 21 meeting. We also are making sure that we're identifying the key performance indicators and collecting baseline data. Those are the some of the major priorities. And then just three key points. The plan is dynamic. It is a living, breathing document that we use as our guide. And we do update it on an annual basis. Dr. Reinhorn mentioned that it is a long-term plan. It is six years. And our goal is to make incremental process, progress each year. There's been some great work around aligning our school improvement plans with the strategic plan. And we're really looking, again, getting everyone rolling in the same direction for the same goals. And lastly, our goals, our five strategic objectives outlined in the plan are stretch objectives. Those aren't objectives that take one year to accomplish. It will take us the entirety of the strategic plan to get there. Just to give you a visual of how we plan to report progress over time, this is just a snapshot of a data chart that we have begun. And it basically has each of the strategic objectives. You see in the five rows, six rows, the year. And then we will provide a kind of a heat map of where we are in terms of making progress toward the goal and also having a running record of what was accomplished each year. We also will be using quantitative data once we collect that baseline data as well to measure progress. So again, this is something that we have in draft form and will share with committees in September. And at this point in time, I will, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Keith, any remote提问 or questions?
Not as of yet, Paul.
Okay. Eric?
So I'm really happy to hear about the dyslexia screening.
Can I just make a suggestion that we all go back to our?
Yes.
I guess my two questions would be, how will the screening be rolled out? As far as pre-K to second grade, will all students be screened? Or just identified students? And then will they be screened each of those years, pre-K through second grade?
Yes. Excuse me. So all students will be screened. They will be screened three times a year. And the first screening will be late September to the very beginning of October. They, I'm trying to remember the other part of your question.
So that was the first question, and they'll be screened each year, pre-K?
Each year, correct. It's a different screener in preschool, because we'll be using the Dibbles eight screener in K through two. There is not a preschool version of that. And the preschool work together with the K through two group. And they're going to be using the PELI, the PELI screener in preschool.
Okay. And if a student is diagnosed and identified, how will they be supported?
So the screener would not diagnose a student. I think it's really important to realize that it will give us indications of students who are at risk of dyslexia. But it would never be the way that we ended up with a diagnosis of dyslexia. There, this is where the screener can, you know, sits at the intersection of general education and special education. And there will be collaboration, and that's where multi-tiered systems of support come in. We will be using collaborative team meetings to look at the data involving special education, general education, reading teachers. It will sometimes inform us to say, how do we group students in tier one instruction in the classroom? And at other times, it might push us to say, is there further assessment that needs to happen for a student?
Great, thank you.
Sure.
I have another question, sort of to piggyback on the dyslexia screening. You said it was grant-funded. Is it actually for the tools? Or is it the people power to do it?
Some of both. So the grant funding is paying for the tools for, with the Dibbles, actually. The tools are not the biggest expense, because the Dibbles is an open source. But there's a massive amount of photocopying that is being paid for by the grant in terms of the manuals and the recording sheets. It pays for some professional development, which we are going to use a train-the-trainer model. So it will, is paying for professional development for those individuals who will then support the teachers in learning to implement. And I think that's most.
And how long the grant, does it cover just next year?
So at this point, it covers next year, but I won't be surprised if there aren't further opportunities. I think they've actually given out less money than they had hoped to give out. So I think that they will continue to invest. There's a lot of interest from the state in supporting this work.
Okay. And last question, as the students go through those screenings, do you communicate with the parents, like the families, about that? Or is that something that, like, only?
So that's a great question. The, if, for many of you who have had elementary students in the system, often at a conference, a teacher will pull out literacy data that they will talk to you about. And some of that data actually was from Dibbles Next, which is another version of Dibbles. If you were in the Northborough schools, where they were using Dibbles Next. It will probably be much like that, where it may be part of a conference, that a teacher might pull out that data and use that as one of many sources of data that is informing the way they understand your child's learning. We don't have a plan that there would be like a report that goes home to parents. I think it's important to see this in the context of multiple sets of data.
And I'll also add that it is our intention to share more information at a fall school committee meeting, pre-K through eight Northborough, pre-K through eight Southborough. So much of this work is in the process of being identified. So, but we will share more information with the committee and the community in the fall.
Karen?
More dyslexia questions? Thank you.
Hot topic.
Yeah, my question was going to be about the grant, and so you've answered that, great. So another question to follow up then. Are they, are all the Northborough and Southborough schools going to use the same screener? Because you indicated that one, Northborough, is just using Dibbles Next. So everyone's going to be using the same one now?
Yes. So to the, some of the goals in the strategic plan are to get greater coherence and consistency in our data. And so one of the criteria in our process was that we picked one screener across both districts. And so this was a step in the right direction, because Southborough had a different set of assessments for some of the pieces that Northborough was using Dibbles Next.
Awesome, thank you. My other question was just about Here Comes the Bus. Any feedback on that? Because I know that was kind of a hot topic. Pre-pandemic, probably not a lot of people riding the bus this year, but I was curious.
More and more, actually. Participation did increase over the course of the year. The glitches ironed themselves out. And for those that kind of logged in and logged back in, a little bit of that type of thing, you had to uninstall and install the app again, people were very happy. So Jean Pinto, the transportation assistant, and I received pretty good feedback. And going into the Start Time implementation, pretty confident that's going to help inform and keep the communication lines open with families. So we're pretty confident about it.
Thanks, just thank you, that was a great update, thanks.
What else, Paul?
Yeah, if I could, I have a few comments and a couple of questions. I thought it was a terrific presentation that was really well-delivered in a very concise manner, but conveyed a whole bunch of information to us. And that was, it covered a lot of stuff in a pretty short period of time. I liked the whole tag teaming approach to it and stuff. It was pretty, pretty good, I thought. A question, I guess, or a comment. I understand skipping, you know, creating the baseline year a year down the road. But there's a lot of concern, I think, in the communities about how effective this past year was. And to not collect baseline data, you know, even though it might not have been the kind of data we would have been thrilled to see, might have been a missed opportunity. I don't know if it's probably too late to do anything about it, but just one man's opinion I thought I'd share. And then the other thing I thought I'd share from an opinion point would be the whole Power School implementation and the tablet rollout to everybody. I mean, those were just terrifically well-done, really fraught with risk sort of projects and stuff. And Julie and her team did good. Mike, two questions. Renovating NEARI was kind of a surprise. I mean, I thought, a lot of the publicity I've read about NEARI says Southborough's outgrowing, it doesn't need it, it shouldn't be part of the school system in the future. We've apparently reached a different conclusion with the town administrators?
No, so the capital planning, school research subcommittee is talking about the context of a larger town and the capital projects for the schools and the town and where they all fit in. Part of the work that we discuss is that the most important thing we could do is submit a statement of interest for a NEARI school through the MSBA so that we get in line and we get in the queue. We don't have to decide exactly what we're doing.
So no real decision?
There's no real decision, but it's important that we get in the line to initiate that first step. Then we can have deeper discussions around renovate, build, whatever the most beneficial option is.
And then my last question, in the equity section of the presentation, you talked about collecting and providing student demographics. Just from like privacy concerns, what sort of demographics are you collecting? Who exactly are you providing them to? Is, are we all okay with it?
Yeah, so we have, we actually partner with the state. We have a lot of that demographic information already. The data that we're looking to collect is around SEL, social emotional learning, around how students are doing socially and emotionally. We are partnering with a company called Panorama, who actually designs surveys to implement and help schools collect information. They are developed by statisticians. They're very nicely done. And that will give us some good data around how our students are doing in terms of their social, emotional well-being.
Okay, but not the, the kind of demographics of low income?
Correct.
Single parent, not, okay.
Correct.
Single parent, not, okay, all right, thanks.
That's K to 12, right? Yes.
And I would just add that in terms of the baseline data, that was the sort of thing we decided not to start this year, but to wait. But there is a tremendous amount of data in the system about student learning that we have always collected and we continued to collect this year to be able to answer the questions.
I think it's an interesting question that, that a lot of us have.
Yes.
How effective a year really was it as compared to what it would have been if there had been no pandemic?
Yeah, I agree.
And it's okay to learn from those mistakes.
Oh, yeah.
In order to grow, you can't grow from always being good at something, you have to fail at something.
No, we agree, and you know, we did have a lot of conversations around, you know, what is the best timing of how to collect that data? You know, part of the, you know, part of the challenge of this year is we were constantly in a state of what's the next? We were in plan, implement, evaluate, plan, implement, evaluate. I think that we did collect some good data, we will have MCAS data, we have SAT, AP scores. So we do have some data, I think we want to have it more systematic. You know, not all students take AP, not all students take MCAS. So that is, that is our, our priority, September, October.
In terms of, you talked about the data analytics platform. So that again is grant funded? And is that a company, is that a person, what is, I mean, what is?
Kind of both. So it is a company, but it is a person. And he has, so his, his name is Paul Manuti. And he keeps saying, I might have to hire someone and expand, but so far, I'm okay. And he works with a lot of districts, and he harnesses the power of Google Analytics. And so it is very cost effective because he really believes there's a tremendous amount that you can do with Google. And so we already use Google Sheets for a lot of our data, data collection. So he is able to take the Google Sheets we have, help us refine them so that they are cleaner. We need to make internal decisions, like we were just talking about, about what data are we collecting? And then he is helping us to connect it to these dashboards.
Have you seen any samples or done any reference checks?
Are you not, are you not, we've, we've talked to some districts, it sounds like I should talk to you.
I've seen some challenges, okay.
I mean, I'll just make a comment, it's not a long-term solution.
Yeah.
It is, it is a stopgap measure to be able to help get the data that we do have and present it in a way that's easier for teachers to access. Julie and Maurice and Stephanie, and we're looking at longer term solutions around creating dat- data dashboards for students.
It is very complicated, and there are so many options out there that are very costly too, so, yeah.
Well, and it felt like a very cost-effective next step, was the way we sort of talked about it.
Need any remote questions?
No.
We're clear. Anyone else here?
I had just a couple. You talked about assessing opportunities for collaboration. How do you go about doing that? It seems like such an amorphous kind of thing.
Yeah, so I mean, I think there are a variety of ways. It's one, looking at teacher schedules, having conversations with, with principals around how teachers work together. It's having focus groups with teachers around how they work together. There are a lot of opportunities for teachers to collaborate over the course of a day and a week. And we're really trying to make sure that we are collaborating in an effective manner. So it's really talking to teachers, looking at schedules, working with principals on kind of analyzing what it looks like. Principals are already in the process of looking at their schedules, thinking about how they can build collaborative times for teachers. So some of the work is moving forward, but just making sure there are not missed opportunities for collaboration.
Okay, and I have one other under equity of opportunity, you talked about the MTSS. And I think you alluded to this, but does this include the most, you know, challenging, the most advanced kids as well?
Yeah, so oftentimes when you look at MTSS or RTI, it looks like a pyramid. You know, so it's, it's, it's looking at students who need interventions, but we're looking at it as a Rambus. So we have both ends of the continuum, students who need interventions, but also students who need acceleration, who might already know the content. What interventions do they need in terms of, they need a different type of acceleration or pathway?
Good, glad to hear that. Anything else?
I feel like I'm yelling.
All right, thank you very much, that was excellent. And that brings us to the personnel report.
Sure, so just one addition to our central office team. We did hire Stephanie Cox as an accountant, she's .6. And Becky, I don't know if you want to say a few words about Stephanie and her work thus far from, from.
So I am so thrilled to have Sunny on board with the finance team. She brings many years of experience in the public sector. And so we, I'm sorry, the private sector. And so she has jumped right in, she's already started to conduct some internal audits on many of our revolving accounts. She's been working closely with Caroline Willard in my office. And I'm just thrilled to have her on board. I can't say enough positive things about having an accountant who works for the district and who understands our system. And the added bonus that she's also a Southborough resident, so she's invested in the school system. Thank you.
All right, and our next item is reappointment of district school physician.
So we were very fortunate this past year to have Dr. Saftar Medina serve as our district physician. He went above and beyond, and if we were to, if he were to charge us by the hour, our budget probably would look very different. He, he has done amazing work. I did ask if he'd be willing to continue to serve as a district physician. And he, he said absolutely yes. He's not able to be here this evening as yet another commitment. But again, I can't say enough about Dr. Medina and his work and his support of our students and our educators and our families, it is pretty impressive. And this is one of, this is a decision that requires a vote of the committee.
Okay, I couldn't agree more that we're very lucky to have him. So I'll entertain a motion to reappoint Dr. Saftar Medina as the district school physician for the regen.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Paul Baca, seconded by Chris Covino, Southborough.
All right, I'll entertain a motion for Southborough, I'll second.
I'll move it. So moved.
And I will second.
Moved by Kim, seconded by Jen Primack and Northborough.
Entertain a motion by Northborough.
So moved.
I did Lauren.
Moved by Keith, seconded by Lauren, we don't need you for this, do we? Okay, any discussion?
Do I have a motion from the supervisor, Union number three?
I don't think we need one.
We, we only need the three, Northborough, Southborough, and the region, Joan, for this one.
Okay.
Thank you though.
All right, thank you.
Kathleen Howland?
I'd like to note that in addition to the medical advisory work, that he has joined us in the Equity Coalition, offering his expertise and interest in that topic. And I thought that was going above and beyond, and I commend him for that. We're lucky to have him in that regard.
Okay, anyone else? All right, Kathleen.
I'm going to jump in and also say that not only did he do all those things, but he was years ago involved in the Start Time Committee. And, I mean, just his, just his whole mannerism and his approach to it. And he's just, he is a wonderful, wonderful resource, and we are very, very lucky to have him.
Couldn't agree more. All right, for the region, roll call vote, Kathleen Howland.
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Paul Baca?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Paul Desmond, yes. Dan had to jump off, he couldn't hear. Joan?
Yes.
Anyone else, I think that's it, right? Southborough?
Okay, Kim?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Roger?
Go, yeah.
Kamali?
Yeah.
And it's a yes for me.
For Northborough, Lauren?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
And myself, Erin, yes.
All right, it's unanimous, congratulations, Saftar. And that brings us to the superintendent's evaluation. I believe Katura is going to handle this as the outgoing union chair.
Yes. Okay, so I just have a brief introduction. So the evaluation of the superintendent is one of the primary and most important functions of the school committees. And it is my honor this evening to present the performance evaluation for Superintendent Martineau for the 2020 to 2021 year. Even though I'm presenting this this evening, I would like to recognize Joan Frank for doing the vast majority of the legwork to synthesize all the information that came in for the evaluation and to create the final product that you all received earlier this week. This is really a presentation by Joan and myself. Mr. Martineau took on the role of superintendent just two years ago in July 2019. And less than eight months after he began in his role, the pandemic came sweeping in, upending everything. This past year was a year of challenges, to say the least, from implementing new learning models to developing health and safety protocols to working with many different groups of stakeholders, and the list goes on. Even in the midst of all these challenges, after compiling the evaluation responses of the individual school committee members, Superintendent Martineau achieved an overall rating of one of the two top ratings for every single goal and standard for which he was evaluated. So it's customary to read into the record each goal and standard and the overall evaluation rating. And I am also going to include a few comments that represent the collective sentiment of the members who completed the evaluation. So the first section of the evaluation are the five goals. The, these are, this is a goal setting that was done by the superintendent and defines the standards of administrative, oh, sorry, different thing. This year Superintendent Martineau was evaluated on five goals that were defined by him and approved by the school committees at the beginning of the year. So the five possible ratings for the goals are exceeded expectations as the highest, and then met expectations, significant progress, some progress, and did not meet. So the first goal was work with Northborough, Algonquin, and Southborough Administrative Leadership Team, NASA, to implement instructional practices that engage students in developing and demonstrating their knowledge and skills through rigorous, innovative, and relevant learning experiences. The overall rating for this goal was met expectations. Some of the comments were, this was a large goal that would be aggressive to achieve in an average year, but to see what has been accomplished thus far is very impressive. Another comment said, this has been a very challenging year to make progress or complete any goals, let alone one as involved as this. It's most impressive to see how much progress has been made within this goal. There was clear evidence this year throughout the district and on every level of the collaboration to engage students. It was obvious that the leadership was exceptional throughout this year, guiding educators in and out of learning models and providing learning experiences to all students. Priority goal number two was provide all students access to challenging and culturally responsive learning experiences that meet their individual needs. The overall rating for this goal was met expectations. One of the comments read, this area presents a challenge, but the superintendent and his team have made significant progress in this area in supporting the mascot study group at Algonquin. His work in supporting cultural proficiency among the NASA team is to be commended. Mr. Martineau has demonstrated a clear commitment and vision to leading this change. At times, certain aspects can be unpopular, yet he appears unfazed and unwavering in his leadership in this area. Mr. Martineau has implemented many professional opportunities for administrators, teachers, and staff to engage in. This is an ongoing goal that will help educators realize their unique position they have in impacting each student they have. All right, priority goal number three was prioritize social, emotional, and physical well-being of students. The overall rating for this was exceeded expectations. Some of the comments went, Mr. Martineau and his team did a wonderful job of dealing with the pandemic and keeping students, faculty, and administration safe and healthy. Securing funding for a, for a director of social, emotional learning in the 2022 budget demonstrates a strong commitment to this goal, and it will bring significant new capacity toward meeting it. Another comment said, the superintendent's goals of getting our students back to in-person learning ahead of schedule before DESI recommended and required it was paramount. The student's health and well-being was always at the forefront, and the district was well-prepared to return to in-person learning because the staff and administration was already planning for it due to the superintendent's leadership. Priority goal four is demonstrate continual growth through professional collaboration. The overall rating was exceeded expectations. Some of the comments said, this year has required more collaboration between professional staff than in any normal year. So despite the superintendent not completing the specific goals, which are in progress, managing three school districts effectively requires continual communication between the NASA team and building slash central officer personnel, and he is to be commended for his performance. Another comment read, Mr. Martineau excels in collaboration. And the pandemic required above and beyond performance by the superintendent to affect collaborative efforts on a variety of new challenges with no past experience to use as any kind of springboard. Goal number five is develop, support, and operate sustainable, attractive, and well-maintained schools. The overall rating was met expectations. Some of the comments read, a key component of having students and staff do in-person learning was finding and managing the resources to keep the building clean and well-maintained. Reorganizing the district to have an assistant superintendent that oversees facilities was an important aspect of not only maintaining, but reorganizing the schools to address social distancing and cleaning requirements. Mr. Martineau has been proactive and well-informed regarding capital planning and the best long-term interests of the schools. Another comment read, to this category, the word "safe" should be added. In addition to having to maintain the schools as normal, even though things were certainly not normal, there were additional requirements of having to maintain the facilities with new safety and health requirements, and Mr. Martineau and his staff performed admirably. So those were the five goals. In addition to the five goals, there are four standards that are put out by the, by DESI. And they are instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement, and professional culture. And the four possible ratings for these standards are exemplary as the highest, proficient, needs improvement, and unsatisfactory. So standard one is instructional leadership. The education leader promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff by cultivating a shared vision that makes powerful teaching and learning the central focus of schooling. The overall rating for this standard was proficient. Some of the comments read, there is no question that Superintendent Martineau has worked hard to ensure all staff have a shared vision, including through the refined school improvement plans and various professional development opportunities. As he has said many times, students remain his north star, an approach that has served him well. Another comment read, given the difficult year that our district has gone through, Mr. Martineau worked tirelessly to make sure that our staff and students adapted as we went from remote to hybrid to full-time, evaluating the process along the way through surveys to ensure that there is consistency throughout and changing when needed. Mr. Martineau is excellent at connecting every decision and action back to the vision and strategic plan. The second standard is management and operations, and that's defined as promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff by ensuring a safe, efficient, and effective learning environment, using resources to implement appropriate curriculum, staffing, and scheduling. The overall standard for this, the overall rating for this standard was exemplary. Some of the comments read, Greg has exceeded expectations in the most abnormal year. He has continued to forge on and carry out administrative duties and hold normal operations, leadership, and instructional meetings necessary to keep the district operating smoothly. Many initiatives that could have taken a, many initiatives could have taken a backseat, did not. This cannot and should not go unnoticed. Another comment said, the way in which Mr. Martineau has continued to restructure and develop the management and operations of the central office is masterful. The downstream impacts of this to each school is the evidence of a mature organizational structure. He has achieved so much. He has achieved so much in such a difficult year. Buildings have been looked after, transportation optimized, food services schedules have been handled with great success, immediate staffing needs, as well as mid- and long-term strategic staffing." Standard three is family and community engagement. It's defined as promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff through effective partnerships with families, community organizations, and other stakeholders that support the mission of the school and district. The overall rating for this standard is proficient. This, some of the comments read, "This year has certainly been unprecedented, and the partnerships and communication with the families were a priority, rightfully so. The community involvement by members of the medical advisory team plus continued collaboration with the town's health departments was evident and extremely valuable and important." Another comment read, "Mr. Martineau continually demonstrates excellent communication skills that inform the public and families of key decisions and vision for the district." Another one said, "Superintendent Martineau should again be commended for the continued engagement with the community. He consistently sent out communications about the changes happening in the district, as well as asked for input from surveys. He continued to work with the medical advisory team to make sure the schools were safe for all to come back to in the fall, and continued to engage with them throughout the year and made it clear that the health and well-being of everyone came first." And then the last standard is professional culture, which is defined as promote success for all students by nurturing and sustaining a school culture of reflective practice, high expectation, and continuous learning for staff. The overall rating for this standard was exemplary. Some of the comments read, "Mr. Martineau demonstrated a high standard of integrity, respect, courtesy, and professionalism throughout the year. He has continued to promote a professional culture while navigating the unprecedented challenges of the pandemic. Between the opportunities for teachers to reflect and collaborate this year and the focused professional development sessions offered, this is an area where the superintendent shines." Another comment read, "This is yet another area where Mr. Martineau leads by example. Mr. Martineau demonstrates an admirable growth mindset, natural empathy, sincerity, and high level of collaboration. He has a finely tuned and in a pandemic learning year, ever-adjusting level of expectation for students and staff that he is appropriately adjusting in real time based on these extraordinary circumstances." And the last comment I'll read says Superintendent Martineau takes a measured, organized, and strategic approach to everything he does. It is obvious to all that he is a consummate professional who sets a great example for everyone in the district." So.
Thank you, Katara. I guess you've done good. Any comments, questions from anyone? Keith, anybody removed?
Negative.
All right, well.
So I have a couple. Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, truly as a team, so thank you for writing that evaluation because I'm going to use it for Stephanie. And Keith. And Becky, and Heather, and Rhonda, so I can't emphasize enough that it's, you know, although it's flattering, it is a team, there are a lot of great, smart people that I've surrounded myself with, and I think it's a, it's a team effort, so I just, I think it's important to point that out and acknowledge the people that I work very closely with on a day-to-day basis. So when I get needs improvement.
Paul, Joan has a comment.
Joan?
Uh, thank you, Paul. I'd just like to thank all the members for all their participation throughout this year and the cooperation, which, you know, started out to be a difficult year, but we're ending on a very high note. And I'd like to thank all the members, because everything that you've done, even all the comments and the reflective comments that you did with the ratings, made Katara's my job as the chair's to do this so much easier. So thank you to all the members who took the time, and I think we had close to 100%. So I'd like to thank all of you for doing that effort. And then also, at this time, I'd also thank Katara Martin for the wonderful job that she did as the union chair, and it was a, it was a pleasure to work with her and to do the meetings throughout this year and share the responsibility. So hats off to you, Katara, and you did a great summary. Couldn't do it better. And Greg, thank you very much for your leadership and with your administrative team, and also please give Cheryl a break, our thanks, because she really led the compilation of how to do this through a Google Doc, and she gave me a, like a one-hour lesson on how to work on this, and also with Katara, and she was just a wonderful support person to get this to the final stage where we're all. So it, it does take a, village, it takes a team to get to this point, and just happy to be part one.
She just muted herself. Jane, Sean, I hope you were done, because we can't hear you anymore.
She was, she was.
Thank you for that.
I was done.
It's like Joan in a bottle.
Kathleen?
So, piggybacking on what Joan said, I probably was involved in the superintendent's evaluation for many years, either through being the superintendent seat chair or the regional chair, and I got to say that I don't think there was one year that I wasn't finishing the document at this table during the meeting. So hats off to both of you. I'm so glad that the, the whole thing has become more streamlined and easier, and, you know, the fact that you guys got it done well before this meeting is.
Well, I made a few now.
Hats off to both of you.
Okay, well, with that, we have to go into executive session to talk about you, so. I'd like to entertain a motion to go into executive session to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel with the intent to reconvene in open session. For the region, Paul Butka.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Karen Ayers, Southborough.
Okay, for Southborough?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Jen, seconded by Kim. For Northborough?
So moved.
Second.
Second, Lauren.
Moving to Lauren.
For supervisor union number three, the motion?
So moved for the union?
So moved by the union, by Keith, second?
Second, by Katara.
Second, Katara, thank you.
All right, so roll call vote. For the region, Kathleen Holland?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Paul?
Sure, yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Paul Desmond's a yes. Joan Frank?
Yes.
I believe that's it? Southborough?
Southborough, Roger?
Yes.
Kamali?
Can you repeat the motion?
It's to go into executive session.
Yes.
Okay. Kim?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
And Katara is a yes. Roll call vote for Northborough, Lauren?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
And myself, Erin, is a yes.
For supervisor union number three's roll call, Jen Permac?
Yes.
Roger Challen?
Yes.
Katara Martin?
Yes.
Keith LaBelle?
Yes.
Lauren Bailey-Jones?
Yes.
And myself, it's unanimous to go into executive session. So now, do we go to that other link? Do we need to go to that other link?
Correct.
So moved, second. Seconded by Chris Covino, Southborough.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Jen, seconded by Katara, Northborough.
For Northborough?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Keith, seconded by Erin, union.
Uh, supervisor union number three, motion?
So moved, by Katara.
Moved by Katara, second?
Second, Jen.
By Jen, thank you.
All right, roll call vote, first with the region, Kathleen Holland?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Paul Butka?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Desmond's a yes. Joan?
Yes.
That's it?
All right, for Southborough, Kim?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Kamali?
Yes.
And it's a yes for me. For Northborough, Lauren?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
And myself, Erin, yes.
For supervisor union number three, Jen Permac?
Yes.
Roger Challen?
Yes.
Katara Martin?
Yes.
Keith LaBelle?
Yes.
Lauren Bailey-Jones?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it's unanimous.
All right, we are back in open session, still, and we're talking about the superintendent's contract. So at this point, I'd like to entertain a motion that we award Superintendent Martineau a 2.5% increase to his base salary, bringing it to 195, 160 as of July 1st. Additionally, we have agreed to put his current $3,000 travel stipend and $1,200 cellphone stipend into his base salary, bringing the total base salary to 199, 360. We'd also like to extend his contract through June 30th, 2026, so five years from now. Paul Butka?
So moved for the region.
Thank you.
Second.
Kelly Gannett moves for Northborough.
All right, we have Paul Butka for the region, seconded by Kathleen Polichko, and Kelly Gannett for Northborough.
Second, for Northborough.
By Keith, Southborough.
Motion for Southborough?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Kim, and seconded by Jen, and the union.
So moved.
So moved.
Moved by Joan.
Second.
Seconded by Keith. Any discussion? Paul?
Well deserved, well deserved.
Indeed. Okay, roll call vote. Region, Kathleen Holland?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Desmond's a yes, Joan?
Yes.
Southborough?
All right, uh, Kim?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Kamali?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Roll call vote for Northborough, Lauren?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Myself, Erin, yes.
Union?
For the union, Jen Permac?
Yes.
Roger Challen?
Yes.
Katara Martin?
Yes.
Uh, Keith LaBelle?
Yes.
Lauren Bailey-Jones?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it passes unanimously for the union.
Passes unanimously all around, congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Roger, did you hear that?
And that brings us to audience sharing. It's now time for audience sharing, is there anyone in the audience who has something to share?
Negative.
Okay. In that case, I will entertain motions to adjourn. Kathy Key moves for. Oh, yeah. Region is staying in session, yes, so, Southborough.
Okay, is there a motion for Southborough?
I'll leave that for our crowd.
Go ahead.
Second for Northborough.
I'll move for Southborough, okay?
Second.
Moved by Jen, seconded by Kim for Southborough.
And union?
Motion? Make the motion.
And Keith did?
Motion?
Motion made by Roger, seconded by?
Second, Keith LaBelle?
Keith LaBelle.
Okay, roll call vote, Southborough?
Kim?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Kamali?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Southborough is adjourned.
Northborough?
Lauren?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
And myself, Erin, yes, Northborough is adjourned at 8:05.
Union?
For the union, Jen Permac?
Yes.
Roger Challen?
Yes.
Katara Martin?
Yes.
Keith LaBelle?
Yes.
Lauren Bailey-Jones?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it's unanimous to adjourn.
Okay.
Thank you for allowing us to do that.
Thanks for being patient with the.
Okay, with the regional school committee meeting of June 16th, 2021, is back in session. I believe the first order of business is recognition of retirees. Turn it over to Superintendent Martineau.
Sure, so I'd like to invite Ellen Mariana up to join me. I did tell Ellen that I need to rethink about how to celebrate her retiree by inviting her retiree to come to a school.
You're not quite retired yet.
Cement a decision.
But thank you. So Ellen has been a part of Algonquin since 2001, so for many years, she was a career changer. So she worked at Digital and General Electrums, and worked in the finance industry, and we've had several conversations around areas of finance. A graduate of Skidmore and Harvard, so very well-educated, and she, you were the president for computer science?
A long time ago.
So you were an early doctor of computer science, so she's been an outstanding educator here at Algonquin for many years. She, she is considered to have grace and humor like her colleagues. She's known for teaching all students, collaborative, student-centered, positive. She's been a mentor, an educator, a coach, a friend, and an excellent colleague, and she's earned the respect of all involved in Algonquin High School. She's been a mentor, an educator, a coach, a friend, and an excellent colleague, and she's earned the respect of all involved in Algonquin High School. So I want to take a minute and just acknowledge her, confess, and wish you well in your next future endeavors, and thank you for everything you've done. And we have a small token of appreciation, so congratulations.
Twenty great years here, so thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Next item is action on minutes. We have a number of them, I'm going to try to do them all in one fell swoop. So we'd like to approve the open meeting minutes of May 19th, 2021, as well as the audit subcommittee meeting minutes of April 27th, 2021, as well as the capital planning subcommittee meeting minutes of November 10th, 2021, and the policy development subcommittee minutes of January 12th, 2021. We want to approve and release the executive session minutes of May 19th, 2021, and release the already approved executive session minutes of March 2nd, 2021.
So moved.
Moved by Paul Bucka. Seconded by Kathy Key. Any discussion?
Yes.
Kathleen. Kathleen.
So on, sorry, they're double sided. So on the open meeting minutes of May 19th, 2021, for the, sorry, the open meeting, in the, there's nothing that's erroneous, but in the audience sharing section, Eileen has very accurately depicted what the gentleman said. But when I read it, I was like, this is a problem because the way it's written, it says, "He expressed his opinion that spending almost half a million dollars on a change has been a waste of taxpayers' money." So here's the problem, we aren't spending almost a half a million dollars to change the mascot, and nowhere is that reflected in the minutes, actually nowhere was that reflected in our meeting because we cannot, or we choose not to engage with audience sharing members, because then it's deliberation. So, so I don't know how this is best fixed for here and in the future. And I feel like in the past, and mostly it was, this is going back to Charles Gabron, when something so egregious was stated, he would sit there and he would say, he would raise his hand and say, "I just, I can't let that go by." So, so maybe if something like this, which is presented here as a statement of fact, but it's an erroneous fact, maybe during the minute, I mean during the meeting, we should correct anything like that, especially so it then is reflected in the minutes.
I think that's a good suggestion.
So, all I can say is that if it's a fact that I know about, I'm perfectly happy to do it in the future, but...
Okay.
Anyhow, so I'd like the meeting, I mean I'd like the minutes to reflect that that statement is an erroneous statement. So I'm not sure if we want to amend the minutes, or if we want to just say for the record here, or what we want to do.
How about say, "He erroneously stated..." We're used to seeing that in the press these days.
Yes, exactly, however you want to do it. He expressed his erroneous, no, that's not right. He erroneously, no, that's not it either.
Can you see how it currently reads?
Yeah.
Inaccurately, but passionately.
Maybe we should hold on to this one.
Maybe just a line that says, "Because the school committee by policy does not reply to audience sharing comments, the fact that the spending is only X or will be dramatically less or..."
Or just that statement is erroneous, yeah.
Yeah, something, I mean, maybe that's not a bad way to round it off and just, you know, I mean, you know, a citizen had something to say, he said it, it's, you know, I mean...
It's his statement, which I'm not saying it's erroneous.
It does say it's his opinion, so it's...
He expressed his opinion that, but it implies in these minutes that that's what we're doing, and we're not.
So one suggestion that Cheryl and I talked about today was, if you make that on the record comment, it will go into this meeting's minutes.
That's a great idea.
And then we'll put in a link to these minutes, just saying, please see...
Yes.
Minutes of, to correct.
I love that idea, so I won't have to redo this.
Exactly.
All right. So we're good with that? So it's been moved and seconded, correct?
Yes.
So roll call vote, Kathleen Holland.
Yes.
Karen Ayers.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Sean.
Yes.
Paul Bucka.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Kathleen.
Yes.
Joan.
Yes.
Dan. Dan Kalenda.
So Kalenda says yes, but unfortunately Kalenda's going to sign off because I can hardly hear a thing. But I stand what Kathleen was saying, but the audio, this is toilet based, so I'm going to have to sign off after this.
Okay. And Desmond's a yes. And that passes unanimously. And brings us to educational policy, none at this time, and then new business, starting with the legislative update.
So just a quick update on the budget process at the state level. The budget is in conference committee and based on all indications, the projections that Becky and her team used are solid. In fact, we could see additional reimbursement in Circa Breaker, Chapter 70, and also regional transportation, so all good signs moving forward at this point in time. The second update is that MASC is holding its fall conference. They do have an early bird registration rate by, I think it's the end of July. But if you're interested in registering, it's a great conference, and just let Cheryl know, and she'll send out some information as well.
Okay, thank you. Next up is the COVID-19 update.
So really no new information in terms of COVID-19. Last Friday was the conclusion of the screening program. Just want to commend Mary Ellen and her team for great work they did kind of managing the pandemic. We did have a conference call with the Commissioner of Education today, and he signaled that this fall there will be no restrictions of social distancing, and he did signal that potentially no masks will be required. But the DPH will weigh in and provide schools with guidance. I think at the high school, we can predict that we will reopen fairly in a normal fashion, which is excellent news.
Very good.
Question, any conversation about making vaccinations mandatory for staff?
Yeah, the Commissioner did share that he did not, he did not think that vaccinations would be required, and he signaled that he didn't recommend that superintendents or school districts make vaccinations mandatory. He thought it would be a legal quagmire, is what he discussed.
Yeah, and he said they're seeking legal, like more definitive legal advice, but that's their initial...
We require other vaccines, right?
Yeah, right.
We require smallpox, we require measles, we require...
I think part of it has to do with the fact that these vaccines are still emergency approval.
Sure, and so, you know, but eventually the FDA is going to say yes.
Then it may be different.
So then in his mind, it's a whole different conversation, why not anticipate that and have the conversation now? Seems kicking the can down the road.
I was going to say, like, the colleges right now, like, you know, Hayden goes to Indiana University and they just got sued by the state for requiring students to have the vaccine. So it's, I think it's more of a legal until they make it 100%, I don't think.
I think our vaccination rates too are extremely high.
Yeah.
I think we have, Mary Ellen, I'm not sure what the latest...
Our 16 to 19-year-old category of both towns is greater than 95%. Our class rate is rising every single week. You can see on the data on the state website that impacts. So I think Northborough this week is at about 72%, as is 210, and Southborough with 12% for the 12 to 15-year-olds, so.
So what about the teachers, Ellen, Mary Ellen, do we know the answer to that, have all the teachers?
No, I don't know that.
Right, so...
Because our teachers come from all different areas, they're not from these two towns, but...
I get it, I knew the answer.
Is lunch looking like it still is going to be neat, socially distanced?
No, no restrictions, so lunch...
That reclaims a lot of space.
It does, yes, and time, which is kind of how it impacted us.
Scheduling, yeah.
So Sean has Plan A, Plan B, and Plan C.
I do. Feeling good about it.
All right. That brings us to the 2021-22 Subcommittee and Liaison Assignments. Cheryl sent out an updated list, I think, there was only a couple of questions. Kathleen Holland, are you okay with the senior?
Sure.
Okay, and it was one, I think, let's see. I think all the actives are covered then, right? So I think we're good on that. Any questions, comments? All right, Physical Education and Health Department presentation.
So this evening we have Brian Mossen, who's department chair, who will provide an update.
So I have not, I've not attached to the Apple TV here, but I'm going to try now. There you go, yep, all right.
Well, before I get started this evening, I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to share what we do in health and fitness. I also want to thank you, especially this year, for all the work that you do and have done for Algonquin. It has certainly been a privilege for me the past 25 years to be a part of such a wonderful learning community, and I look forward to the years ahead. I will say, I am a little relieved that we are in person, because each time I went on Zoom, I was reminded of the fact that I look very different now than when I first started teaching in the early 90s. I now have gray hair and I have reading glasses somewhere, here they are. And I'm not quite sure how that happened. Anyway, tonight, I want to share with you three things about our program. I want to share with you quickly just a brief overview, and then want to share a quick snapshot of what health and fitness looked during COVID, and then lastly, some overarching goals that we have as we head into the future. Health and fitness, as we begin, share a little bit about our program. Health and fitness primarily consists of four main courses. We have Health and Fitness 9, Health and Fitness 10, Health and Fitness 11, and Health and Fitness 12. These courses are all semester courses, and they are requirements for each student. Each student must take one of these each semester at every grade level. To begin, normally, students will start with Health and Fitness 9. This course is designed for our freshmen, and the main focus is really on personal fitness. It also provides a great way for students to get acclimated to Algonquin. And as you can see, they experience a host of activities. The picture that you see on the slide is one of our freshman classes excited about archery. From Health and Fitness 9, students move to Health and Fitness 10. Health and Fitness 10 is designed for sophomores and primarily looks at health-related issues facing adolescents. The course covers a range of topics as you would imagine. There's also guest speakers that periodically come in and speak to our students. In addition to classroom work, students also enjoy one or two days a week of fitness activities, and the picture you see is a lesson on the value of sleep. And if you look at the picture, all, as I look at it, it doesn't seem like anyone is sleeping, so that's a good thing. From Health and Fitness 10, we move to Health and Fitness 11. Health and Fitness 11 is designed for our juniors. The primary focus is on team building and working in a group setting. There's a big emphasis on helping students see and understand the value of other viewpoints and perspectives. Students spend a lot of time outside utilizing our ropes course and hiking, as well as enjoying many other activities, including our most recent addition, disc golf. They also normally experience a hike to up to the top of Mount Wachusett, which is what the picture is here that you are looking at. That takes us to our seniors. Our senior program, Health and Fitness 12, is basically about preparing students for life after high school. And in the process, we look to create opportunities for them to have fun as they exit our hallways and head out into the real world. Like the other courses mentioned, they too engage in a number of activities. You see a picture of one of them, table tennis, otherwise known as ping pong. Though we have a wonderful program that we have here at Algonquin, not unlike the rest of the school this past year and a half, we have had to make some adjustments and get a little creative as we dealt with COVID. During our remote time, we created live Zoom exercise sessions, instructional videos, exercise logs, home care projects, and much more. Truly, the Health and Fitness Department rose to the occasion. When we got back into school, we tried to give students the best experience that we could possibly give them, considering the circumstances. One activity we were able to do was pickleball. And if you look at the picture on the screen, this is a picture of our tournament winners, and yes, that is Kristen Morcone, dressed like a pickle. She takes it very seriously. We had to modify curriculum, initiate new activities, I mentioned disc golf being one. At our core though, if you look at the picture to the bottom, Mr. Kenny working with a student, we sought a side of social distancing requirements and mask mandates to connect with our students. We also, along the way, connected with some other folks, and if you look carefully, you may even see some familiar faces. Our faculty all-stars played pickleball with us, and this was certainly a great opportunity for our faculty to alleviate stress and to connect with one another. We, whenever possible, try to initiate things like this. As we forge ahead, we are excited, I'm sure I speak for not just my department, but all educators. We are excited about normality, and so as we move ahead, we look forward to working with Principal Bevins and his administrative team, who have been so supportive and helpful to enhance our existing programs. We also look forward to continuing our work with Principal Bevins and Assistant Superintendent Lavoie in enhancing our productive venture course. And in addition to these goals, we are excited to start an elective program. We have two weight training classes that we'll be running next year. And then the following year, we hope to run two team sport classes with more electives on the horizon. Lastly, we anticipate implementing the new state health frameworks. Fortunately for us, one of our staff is on the panel, Melissa Arvinagen, and according to her, these should be coming out soon. At this time, to borrow from... At this time, to borrow from our Zoom language, I'm going to mute myself. See if you have any questions for me about our program.
Questions, comments?
What is team sports? Like, what is that going to? And obviously, you're going to tell me we're going to do team sports. But I mean, what, so that's going to be an elective? And that's going to be for kids who want to do an assortment of, like, basketball, baseball? Like, how does, what does that look like?
So team sports is basically a semester of variety of sports that are put together. Often, the teacher will, in the past, when we've done some team sports, will sit with the class, and they will develop a syllabus of activities that they'll participate in and then also they'll learn about. And so it's a very active class. It's a great class for our students that are very active, that would benefit from just a class. They can go and be competitive and have fun, learn about a sport. So it's, historically, it's been very popular in the past. So we hope to get it in motion, not next year, but the year after.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Well, I guess it was so thorough that we just don't have anything else. But thank you.
Well, I did thank you for giving me this opportunity, and again, probably do.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here. All right. That brings us to Joint Policy Development Plans Summary Sheet.
Sure. So in your packet is a proposed policy development timeline. On May 10th, the Joint Policy Development Subcommittee met and really talked about how we could leverage the expertise of all three committees and streamline the work moving forward. So it provides an outline of the work in terms of what we're proposing and really looking at the annual policy review process and focusing on the joint policies that have to do with personnel. Meeting in August, and then we put together kind of a timeline in terms of how to move the policies forward. What we're trying to do is utilize the expertise of all three committees. Oftentimes, we'll bring a policy to the policy Subcommittee in Southborough, and they'll ask what Northborough is doing. Northborough will ask what the region is doing. So this capitalizes on everyone's expertise. So this is our plan, and we hope to move it forward and hope it is successful, making things a little bit more efficient next year.
Questions, comments? So does this take the place of the individual policy Subcommittee?
There will be some individual policy Subcommittees. Obviously, there'll be some unique policies, but this will be the bulk of the work.
Very good. Next up, the Superintendent's Report to the Committee.
All right. And happy to turn it over to Principal Bevan for the Principal's Report.
Thank you, Greg. We'll be sharing again. Well, good evening, everyone, and this is the first time I'm seeing many of you in, like, real person. I've seen you on computer screens since, I don't know, March of, well, I don't know, May of last year, when I was interviewing. Before I get started, I just do want to thank you for all bringing me on board. This is, I'm finishing up my first year, and it was kind of a wild year, but I'm so happy to be here and glad to take on another traditional, a more traditional year next year. So let me tell you a little bit about a few things happening here at the school. I'm going to tell you about graduation, which was last Sunday, which was outdoors and in person. Also, we have, summer reading is kicking off. And then, excitingly, we are starting to, the opening and reopening of the school really has allowed us to do some very exciting things that we were pretty much used to forever doing. And here, now we're getting re-used to them. So last Sunday, we had our graduation, which was out on our football field. We have several parents here on the, on the school committee who attended as parents of seniors and then others who attended as school committee members. And so you were seeing a lot of communications from me over the weeks leading up to graduation, because the graduation guidelines from DESI changed literally about every two or three weeks. And so we were constantly shifting. And the team, the graduation planning team, did a really great job of shifting all of our planning and trying to communicate as best as we could about what that meant for families and for students. Ultimately, we, we had an event at 10:00 a.m. on the football field. It was very hot, but we moved, moved things along pretty quickly. Students could, graduates could sit within about, you know, pretty close to each other, more close than they were used to indoors and without masks this time. And parents were able to join and sit in the, on the field or in the grandstands. And we got a lot of good feedback that it felt like a real celebration and something that the seniors deserved. So we were really happy with how it turned out. And we got a lot of feedback saying, can we do that again in that same way next year outdoors? So that's something we're contemplating and thinking of, if we can do that, and I would hope that we can. Our summer reading is a program that our librarian, Kim Honey, has taken on and has done a really nice job of. She did a kickoff that was middle of last week here in the evening, and it's designed to be a real celebration of reading as a lifelong endeavor. And they, she is leading a program over the course of six evenings over the course of the summer for students to come and to discuss books and to, to talk about the things they're reading from a book list that she's published. And that is something that we had a whole bunch of kids, many of them were on the, were coming up from the middle school to engage in this, in this program. And there's an online, there's an online portion of it that is happening that's, you know, all along the way, where people can create posts and like each other's posts and interact informally. But in this, like, digital environment that's designed to make, kind of make it feel even more engaging and more, more fun for kids. It's kind of gamifying the reading for, for students and linking kids together and also adults as well. And then, very happily, I can report, we have been able to, as things are changing almost by the day, from the, from DESI, we were able to pull together. And when I say we really, I don't want to take any credit for this. This is my amazing team of, of performing arts folks, Amy Collins, Eric Vincent, and Olivia Gallagher. She, they pulled together a jazz night, which you can see on the left-hand side, and I love that picture on the right, that was out in our parking lot. Families had to sit distanced apart, and there were some restrictions for musicians, but this is the first time they were able to play for a live audience in a very, very long time. And they worked so hard, and there's only so much enthusiasm you can build, I think, in a virtual environment and in a Zoom or in a pre-recorded kind of setting. So this was a real, a real fun moment for our kids and for our families to be able to see their child, you know, up there and performing. And as you can see, the weather was beautiful for that event. Somewhat similarly, we had an art show here in the library. If you, behind the book stacks here, behind Heather, there are, the art's not up there anymore, but it could give you a sense if you walk through it. We had, we had an art show here in the library where we had to manage how people came and when they arrived and the route they took. But it allowed families to walk through and see their child's art and to interact with, with the artists and to, to see other families do that as well. So these were really kind of fun, fun return, fun moments of returning to a more traditional environment here at the school as restrictions are starting to lift. And then, just generally speaking, the, the school, we're starting to wind down. This would have been, conventionally, this would have been finals week. We did not do conventional finals this week, so we're kind of seeing what that experience is like. And students are starting to wind down and get ready for the summer. And Friday is our last day. It's a half-day, and our teachers are looking very much forward to the summer, just as much as the students. So it's been an exciting year, and everyone's looking forward to a very traditional fall return.
Thank you. Before I open up to everybody else, I just want to say, yeah, graduation was fantastic. My daughter graduated, and I got feedback from a ton of people, and all of it was positive. And you're right, everybody wants it outdoors going forward.
Yeah. Thank you.
I have a question about that.
Yeah.
So a million years ago, I think we did use to do it outside, and we're probably rained out once or twice too many times, and it became a disaster. So I agree, if at all possible, COVID or no COVID, it's always lovelier to have it outside. But I think that maybe, I don't know, if there's a tense.
The way he did it, he had two rain dates, one before, one after the main dates.
Oh, okay.
I thought that was a good idea.
That was the strategy we employed. It was to avoid the, the need to make a call the night before and drag the chairs into the, into the auditorium route. We set multiple rain dates. One was actually preemptive. The first rain date was a Saturday morning. And then the regular graduation was on Sunday, which luckily we were able to have. And the second rain date was on Monday. And our thought was, on that first rain date, was if you had it on a Saturday, people who were in town to watch, to participate, they were visiting, you had family, they could still be there for the whole weekend as they might already have planned to do. So that was, you know, something we might want to consider. I'd have to, you know, get Greg's input and your own input. But I loved the outdoor, the outdoor event was really a success.
Kathy?
So it's finally nice to see you in person. Although I think I saw you at the graduation we had last year outdoors.
Oh, I did, yeah, ma'am. I was there for that, yeah.
But very nice to see you. And congratulations on your first year down.
Thank you.
Challenging. So I heard great things about graduation. I heard it was fantastic, so I think it's really nice. And the other thing that I want to compliment you on was the senior night that you had for the kids on the field. Ella follows some of the seniors, and so she was showing me some of the pictures and the videos that they were taking. And I just think that was such a great way for what was kind of a crappy year for them ended up to be, like, you had some fun stuff planned for them, and I think that that was very appreciated and the kids and the parents and stuff like that.
Yeah, I should have put some photos on that. That was a very nice night, and.
That was just such a great thing to do for them.
Yeah, it was, I think, the best thing we could do within the restrictions we had when we were doing all our planning.
But it looked really fun.
It was, it was a nice night, yeah.
It was a nice gesture on your, on the high school's part.
Well, thank you. I'll pass that along to the team. Kathleen?
I enjoyed graduation. It was my first time that I had gone. I appreciated your warmth. I felt like each person got your attention, and I was impressed with that. And I was wondering if in previous years, the student musicians were involved in the ceremony as it was all pre-recorded music this time?
That's my understanding, is that in previous years, they are there and perform live.
Okay.
A lot of, there's, there's, there's the huge band that, you know, that plays the traditional, you know, graduation pomp and circumstance. And then there's always at least one, like, you know, spotlight sort of event. Yeah. Either with a singer or by themselves, whatever. It's, whether it's the jazz band or whatever, it's always something.
Good. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. Thank you, Mr. Bevan.
Thank you.
All right. So next in your packet is the enrollment report as of June 9th, 2021. And there were no new enrollments since our last report, which was May 21. And we continue to monitor enrollment for the upcoming year.
Can I ask you a question? So I'm looking at the 11th graders in the actual 2021 year. It goes from 318, and the next year, you're projecting 331 seniors. I mean, we really think we're getting 13 more kids coming in as seniors than we have as juniors? I mean, that's kind of an unusual thing.
Yeah, these are directly from eighth grade and moving.
Juniors to seniors.
Yeah. I have to look at that pod. That doesn't make sense.
Oh, thanks.
Because usually, we just.
Yeah, yeah.
I have to say, though, like, I don't know how it is in Northborough, but I have, like, four friends that just sold their house and four more that just put their house on the market right now. So there's, and young families that are buying.
The people with seniors aren't buying those.
No, like, they're just little ones. I'm just saying, like, it's.
Go any other way around.
Yeah. I get it.
So I will look into that and get back to you.
Thanks.
And next in your packet is the FY21 Monthly General Fund Expenditure Report, and I'll turn it over to Becky to go over that report, also to share the end-of-year projections and also speak to COVID-19 Financial Impact and Circuit Breaker.
Very good. Thank you. Not quite sure, do I get up right? So it's unbelievable that there's less than one month to go. Actually, two weeks from today is the end of our fiscal year. So the finance team is very busy working with the high school administration and the departments to close out our fiscal year. As you can see, as of May 31st, we had $811,428 remaining on the bottom line, or 3.36% remaining. Last year, at this time, we had $621,444, or 2.61%. Included in your packet, I have provided a plan for the expenditure of the remaining fiscal year funds. As you can see, I do anticipate transportation contract savings and then costs that are currently on the operational budget that will be moved to a FEMA claim, as well as not utilizing the full $60,000 that is encumbered for food services. So we are thinking that we will have additional money as well on the bottom line. So my proposal is that we expend $225,000 for FY22 out-of-district special education tuitions, as allowed by mass general law. We will also move an athletic staff member salary from the athletic budget onto the operational budget. We can do that with a journal entry in this fiscal year, and that is in the amount of $38,044.76. And that the school committee vote to transfer $175,000 to the Transportation Reserve Fund and $100,000 to the OPEB Trust Fund. And then any remaining funds will go directly to our E and D account. And based on the projections in the packet, you can see that with these additional funds and utilizing the $500,000 towards the FY22 budget, the district's balance would be estimated to be at 4.14% in the E and D account, so below the 5%, but still a healthy amount.
Do you need a motion on that? So for discussion purposes, I would move, as Rebecca has suggested. But then I have some questions. So I move that we transfer, to transfer regional transportation receipts in the amount of $175,000 to the Northborough-Southborough Regional School District's Transportation Fund and to transfer $100,000 to the Northborough-Southborough Regional School District's OPEB Trust Fund.
Second.
Read by Paul, seconded by Chris Covino. Discussion? Paul?
I thought we'd heard earlier that maybe we'd even be getting a few more dollars back from the state. Is that in any of this?
No.
That will be for the FY22 future.
And then a different question. The athletic salary that we're trying to move out of athletics and into the operational budget? I mean, from a, from a policy point of view, I mean, you know, are we doing this just as a one-time, one-year? Because we've got the money, and is that? So then next year, we're going to move it back and?
It's a one-time occurrence, and the reason being, and I was going to touch on this on the revenue report, is that we are seeing our athletic receipts less than what we had projected for this year. And so this would actually bring them close to the break-even point on their athletic budget for this year.
Got it. Okay.
Sean? What is the Transportation Reserve Fund?
That is a reserve fund that regional school districts can set up, and you can deposit money that is received as part of your regional transportation reimbursement amount and use it in the next fiscal year. In this fiscal year, we actually used about, I think it was $72,114 from last year's money towards this year's transportation. So it helps to offset our transportation costs in future years.
So I can imagine, because the state doesn't always give the same reimbursement, just so people understand that, it's, it's not just extra money, it's to help stabilize.
And you have to use it in the next fiscal year. It's not something you can carry over from year to year.
Okay, thanks.
Kathleen?
Um, so I, I'm, I don't know, I'm naive. I think of FEMA as, you know, natural disasters. What is the, the FEMA twenty-three thousand dollars?
So FEMA just recently announced new guidelines and now, um, PPE that schools purchased, uh, is now eligible. It previously was not. It was only for first responders. Uh, and so beginning January twenty-first, PPE in schools is now covered. So we are going back and we're going to be able to move some of those costs, um, and claim those through FEMA.
Well done.
Kathy?
I don't know if it's a question for now or for later on the budget, but, um, I volunteered at the food pantry and there was just discussion about, um, is lunch going to be free again next year? So will we have issues again with the actual budget or?
We, we're anticipating that we'll be in better, um, condition financially because students will, will be in session.
Yeah, okay.
Um, the, the challenge was that we only had, we're serving half to lunches because of the hybrid model.
Okay.
So we actually could see a significant.
I would, I would agree. We are forecasting that we get right back on track with, um, you know, standardizing the participation, which would definitely help us out financially.
Okay.
The reimbursement rate is greater than our typical lunch rate was, so overall, for every lunch that we take in, we're able to, you know, make more money on that.
Okay, all right. And I'll just add to that, that May was our best month.
May was the best month.
Because we did have our students back in full time and we actually saw it chipping away at the deficit that we were seeing in the food service account.
Okay.
Hope you were cranking out those cookies.
They were.
Sean?
Are you doing breakfast? I remember, and that will continue to.
That will continue, yeah.
Are many people taking advantage of it?
Not as many as we'd like. It's something that we're working to.
They gotta wake up first.
Yeah, they gotta, well, with the later start time, we're going to be good to go.
Here we go.
Yeah. So we're hoping actually with the later start time that our participation would increase.
Paul?
So back to the transportation reserve fund, did I hear you say we took seventy-two thousand out of it this year, but you're proposing we put a hundred and seventy-five thousand back?
So last year, we voted, um, from the FY twenty budget to move seventy-two thousand dollars into it, and we used that towards our FY twenty-one expenses.
Okay.
So for this year, since we do have extra money, we're proposing that we put that into the transportation reserve fund to use for next year's budget.
So why not throw it at OPEB or, or SPED or, I mean, so, I mean, we're just kind of, it, to replace what we took out, you know, it was like a seventy-five thousand dollar spend. It seems to me we got a hundred thousand extra that, which, I guess I'm curious why we selected transportation reserve instead of something else.
I guess the strategy would be that, um, it gives us flexibility as we move through, through next year, having that in the transportation reserve, because most likely we won't need to access it if it's a typical year, and therefore we have to expend it would hit the bottom line of the budget. And at that point, the school committee can make a decision around at the end of.
We could spend it somewhere else.
We could, we could look at a need.
So it also doesn't have the same.
I table my question.
Anything else on this? We do have a motion on the table. I believe we're ready to vote. Roll call, Kathleen Holland?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And Sean?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. It's unanimous.
Okay.
I think we still need a vote on the, or did?
We need that on the monthly general fund report also. Yes.
Want to do that now?
Sure.
Uh, okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-one monthly general fund expenditure report as of May thirty-first, twenty twenty-one until audit.
So moved.
Moved by Paul Becker.
Second.
Seconded by Kathleen Polczko. Any discussion? Roll call vote, Kathleen?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Kathy Keane?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. It's unanimous. What does that bring us?
COVID financial impact, so I will, um, present the, what I normally present to the committee. I think Keith is going to share that on the screen.
I'll dug.
One other thing that I did want to mention too, I really wanted to thank Michelle Lemay, who is the regional financial coordinator. Um, as you can imagine, this year has not been the typical year in the finance, in the payroll area, and so she's really rolled with the punches and I can't thank her enough for everything that she's done. I just wanted to let the committee know how valuable a team member she is. So fi- so COVID nineteen financial impact report, um, hopefully this will be the last time that I'll present this to all of you. Um, so just to, to reiterate, the, the three grants that we've really used this year, that's the school reopening grant, the CBRF, um, the state coronavirus prevention fund, and then the remote learning technology essential grant. Those funds have all been expended and I will touch on where those funds were actually expended over the course of the year. Um, we have, now have three ESER, um, grant funds that have been made available to the district. Um, the first ESER, um, was a smaller amount in twenty-seven thousand, um, that we did apply for, um, using for Chromebooks, um, and that does have to be expended by the end of the next fiscal year. Um, ESER two, um, we are applying for that by the end of July. Um, that has one provision where it does require that we utilize ten thousand dollars for, um, mental health services for our students. Um, and then finally, ESER three, um, has just recently been announced. Um, you can see that that money is a little bit more substantial, two hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars. And there are also provisions on that money, um, where we do have to have a reopening plan for full in-person learning in place, um, within thirty days, which we already have. Um, and we also have to utilize twenty percent of those funds, um, to address student learning loss. Um, and then there are other provisions related to maintenance of effort which do not apply to us. Um, so that is the latest, um, and that's actually later on in the, um, presentation, but we've just, um, covered that agenda item, um, through this conversation. But that one, we are hoping to apply for by October, and we have until, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-four to expend all that, those funds. Our expenses, we're continuing to trend along where we anticipated. We're really not seeing any aberrations. The one area I think that we, um, we knew that we were going to be, um, expending it, it more greatly would be in our technology area, and thankfully these great funds have, um, allowed us to, um, use owls and, um, some neat technology that has been employed in the classroom to help students, um, throughout the course of the year. Um, the PPE that is listed on this expense report, um, is, does include some of those funds that will be transferred over to FEMA, but we did expend them, so I wanted to make sure that they were reported to the committee, but FEMA will be reimbursing us for some of those. So I did want to give a, the committee an update, though, on, um, the, the various grant funds. Um, the CBRF grant, um, was really the, the main grant that we utilized this year, and that was over three hundred thousand dollars. And you can see the breakdown of where those expenses, um, fell. We really took advantage of it in a variety of different areas, from, um, professional development, um, opportunities, um, to using some contracted services for translations for, um, we had to employ COVID monitors at our athletic events, um, and we also used it for some of the nurse substitutes and teacher substitutes that we had this year. Um, instructional technology, I think, was the main area where we were, did, um, expend funds from this grant, and then the other area was in our air purifiers that were put into, uh, each classroom, um, here at the high school. Um, so cleaning and plexiglass and those areas without this grant, um, it, we, we probably would have been in a different, um, situation financially. The state coronavirus prevention fund was a smaller amount. That was the twenty-five dollars per student that we received for the state and then the additional seventy-five dollars for, um, low-income, um, students. So that was used for the tents that you see outside, um, for additional air purifiers, um, for additional PPE. Um, and then, uh, that senior event that we were talking about, um, that helped, uh, the, the school to put that event on, and then also the cannon design program that was utilized to help plan the classrooms. And then finally, our food service. Um, so as you can see, as of the end of May, we served, we've served just shy of fifty thousand meals, so forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety-six lunches and sixteen thousand, five hundred and fifty-seven breakfasts. Um, we, right now, are projecting a, a loss of thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and two, which is, um, lower, as you can see from last, um, month, and again, that is because May, um, we really did, um, see our numbers increase substantially. Um, so we are, um, we are projecting that we're probably going to come in, I'd say about a mid-forty-thousand-dollar, um, loss once, um, the month of June is, is done. And that is it for the, the coronavirus or the C- COVID update. Any questions?
Paul, I just have one, uh, I'm just kind of curious about all those air purifiers, you know, when, when we don't really need them anymore. I mean, are we gonna, are we gonna just keep operating them until they break, or are we gonna mothball them, or save them for flu season, or, and we got a lot, we got a lot of them, right?
We do. We do have a lot of them. You know, a lot of different thoughts, including the ones that you just mentioned, have been discussed. You know, they're, they're not, um, necessarily high-end commercial models, um, so we're, we're thinking that we are going to have, you know, some turnover of them, hopefully, uh, not, you know, next year, but maybe the year after. Um, we haven't really developed a full plan for that. We are going to do a hard inventory of them this summer to make sure we know what we've got. We do have replacement filters, uh, to go through next year, so the plan as of now was to continue to use them. There is a peace of mind. Certainly flu season did come up.
Right.
As a, a great opportunity to, to use them. Um, and I think that's where we're standing right now, and we'll see what the guidance provides. I mean, in late July, in mid-July, we might be given some guidance that we, that, that's recommended to continue, and then we have them in place and we'll.
And they're never a bad thing.
It's not a bad thing to have.
We have the filters to keep, keep them going, and so there's no incremental operational costs.
No.
Foreseeable, anyway.
Nope, and we've already taken care of a lot of that, you know, pre-spending for next year and getting that supply in-house, so.
Okay, good.
We're covered for another year.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Karen?
Um, oh, I'm sorry. Could you expand a little on the student assessments line item for the CBRF fund and what that might have, maybe that's a question for Stephanie.
Student assessments.
No, um, student assessments. Um, actually, we, uh, worked with Marie and her team, um, and we did, um, purchase some Pearson assessment materials to be used, um, as part of, uh, you know, addressing what some of the needs were, um, post, um, pandemic, so.
And then, do you know what the, um, plan is for the, you know, spent, uh, obviously needed the instructional technology, fifty-nine thousand, so, but we have almost twenty-eight thousand left until next June, so, any, what is the plan for that? If we, do we have enough or are we cycling some out, or what's the plan?
So I know that Maurice, um, Myri and Julie Doyle are looking at a replacement plan. Um, we were able to, as, using these funds to kind of accelerate that plan, um, and now they're going to be putting one in place for, for future years, but we do have plans to, um, to, and especially once all the devices are being returned this week, um, analyze what we have.
In shape, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Christine.
Yeah, so, you know, but they, they, they have put a plan in place for a reci- replacement cycle.
Okay.
Kathleen?
Just had a comment or a request and, um, a question. One is that, um, you know, part of being on the school committee is, is this alphabet soup of acronyms, and, um, I, I would benefit from understanding what CBRF was and ESER, but it caught my ear that there was ten percent of ESER two toward, um, student wellness, and then in ESER three, there was even more?
So it, ten, ten thousand dollars is allocated specifically for, for, for our purposes, so each district had to allocate ten thousand dollars. So for us, it would be ten percent. Other districts receive considerably more, um, in ESER two money since it's based on Title I and our numbers are low with Title I. So it is allocated specifically for student mental health, um, and we do have a, um, a district-wide committee that has, um, started to do the work of analyzing what we have in-house and looking at new programming and, um, coming up with a plan for how we're going to utilize those funds. Um, and then with the ESER three, it's actually twenty percent to address learning loss.
Learning loss, that's what it is.
Yes.
Thank you.
Sean?
Yeah, I think that, that point, obviously not now, because that grant's not due till October, but to Paul's point earlier, um, it'd be nice to h- hear a report on that when it comes out, like, what's, how's that money being used to address learning loss?
So one important note too, is ESER three funds, we have some time, and we have to write the grant.
It's not till October, yeah.
But we actually have till twenty-four.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what, we're trying to use it strategically to just, if we're in a good fiscal position, how can we use that money strategically to weather any storms that might, uh, come forward? But yes, we will, we can share our plans in the.
Yeah, well, it, it's an opportunity to do, to think outside the box about like how to address learning, you know, on, on a sustained basis rather than just a, you know, one hit, so.
Okay.
And then circuit breaker, so, do you want to talk about that, Greg?
You can.
So moving on, yeah. Um, so last month I had mentioned that we had, at the regional level, we had qualified for extraordinary relief under the circuit breaker program. Um, and I'm pleased to, um, announce that during the month of May, we did receive two hundred and sixty-five thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars. Um, and just for those of you who aren't familiar with the, um, extraordinary relief program, um, the state does put up to, uh, five million dollars or so, um, available to districts who have seen an increase in their, um, special education costs. Um, the way they determine that is if it's a, um, more than twenty-five percent increase over the previous fiscal year in special education costs, then you would qualify. And the amount that is, um, actually, uh, distributed to districts is based on the number of districts that qualify for that program. Um, we were anticipating in the eighty thousand dollar range, so this was a, a little bit of a surprise for, a night, a pleasant surprise for us, so, um, so we did see that come in this month, or in the month of May. Uh, and we've already spoken about the ESER three. Um, so.
That brings us to the statement of revenue?
Just keep going. So, um, as you can see with the, um, statement of revenue, we did receive in May, the first, um, sorry, the last allocation from, uh, Southborough for the June one, uh, their assessment. Um, we also received our May chapter seventy. Um, and then, um, we, uh, you'll see the circuit breaker, um, extra relief, as well as our third quarter circuit breaker payment. Um, we were anticipating that back in March, and as I mentioned, we did go through an audit, um, a successful audit, and so we have received our third quarter payment of that. Um, we are still awaiting additional regional transportation funds. Um, I'm assuming that we will see those within the next couple of weeks since our fiscal year is closing and the state's is as well, so.
Questions on that? I believe we need a motion to approve the Northborough-Southborough Regional School District Statement of Revenue as of May thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Until it's audited, so moved.
Thank you, Paul.
Seconded.
Seconded by Kathleen Holland. Uh, roll call vote, Kathleen?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Very good. And I'm a yes. It's unanimous. Uh, treasurer's report and reappointment?
So we have, uh, Christine Teague joining us remotely. So we have Christine Teague joining us remotely.
Chris, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
All yours.
Okay. I just want to say good evening. This will be going, if you can, I'm reappointed, this will be my fifth year as the district treasurer. And I have to say, a lot has happened since that first year I took office. A lot of great things, a lot of policies and procedures have been implemented. The finance team has been stabilized. When I first took office, I never thought I'd be the most senior president. Since then, a lot of good things have happened. Cash is reconciled within fifteen of almost each month, with the exception of year end. I'm pleased to say, as you can see, the audit was, went great, given the tremendous pressure on everyone last year with the pandemic. And the management letter comments were actually helpful. And I attribute that to the finance team that surrounds me and my position. I just want to say it's been a great year to work with such good people. The OHEV Fund that the school committee approved, as of May thirty-first, we've seen a twenty-five thousand dollar return on a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was initially invested, which is about a seven percent return. And I think that's pretty good, given the fact that we're somewhat, as far as our investments, we're very conservative. So other than that, I really have not much else to say. It's been a pleasure working with everyone. Does anyone have any questions?
Doesn't look like it.
So I would have one, Christine, if you can hear me. My, my only question would be, you still want to work for it?
Well, I think as long as this team exists, I'll definitely want to work with you. And the school committee's been great as well. One thing, Paul, I know you were involved when I did the refinancing that saved the taxpayers a million two over the ten-year period. I am looking into again, if refinancing would be another option. But I think because the bonds are within a, I believe it's five years before they're refundable, it wouldn't make sense for us. But I, I continue to look at that and it's a pleasure to work with everyone.
So I move that we reappoint Christine Teague as treasurer for as long, another year, I guess. Is that what we do, we do it annual?
Second.
All right, moved by Paul Bucker, seconded by Sean O'Shea. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Kathleen?
Yes, please.
Karen Ayers?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
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 Yeses from Sean, O'Shea, Paul Bucka, Kathy Key and Kathleen Polichko. Joan?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, it's unanimous. Congratulations, Christine, and thank you.
Thank you, Christine.
Okay, thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. Bye.
I believe that's it for the superintendent's report. And we're on to old business, beginning with the start time update.
Sure, so Keith Lavoie will provide an update on our start time and the work that we've been thinking about the past.
Seven years. Seven years. Well, thank you, Greg. Yeah, we're here. It's, it's amazing to think about all the work that's been done. Certainly a thank you to Kathleen Polichko for all her time and energy putting into this. And it's, it's coming to fruition. So tonight, I'm going to give an update on where we are now and what we're planning for the, for the next couple of months. But I think it is important to take a look back at the work that we had done and really the reasons why we are looking at start time as such an important thing, especially for our students here at Algonquin Regional. Absolutely, we're going to be paying close attention to those things that have been identified as, as markers of why we're making this change. And this is going to be something I talk about a little later in the presentation. But certainly the ideas that we can improve the overall performance of our students as well as their physical and mental health is certainly at the top of this list of why we're making this change. When we look at the implementation plan, we did segment it into three parts. First is anchored in the communication that will come out, and I'm going to share some detail about that. Then rolling out the implementation, we are in the middle of that right now. We will see it coming to fruition on September first for the first day of school. And then probably most importantly, we will dive into the little bit of this is really, did it have the benefits we were hoping it would? And that's not something we're going to know by October first. That's going to be something I'm really working with Principal Bevan and his team about what we're seeing here at the high school, about changes of behavior and other types of feedback that we'll get. But certainly that's something that's going to come and I'll be reporting back to you as we go. So to dive into it, the communication plan is, is well in motion right now. Superintendent Martino has communicated to the communities of both Northborough and Southborough about the change that is expected for September first. And that's been an ongoing communication that has been going out. On top of that, once the routing and everything is established, and this is a little delayed because of COVID, we were hoping to have gotten to this already, but we are in the middle of this right now. And I want to give a big thank you to Jean Pinto, our Transportation Assistant and Registrar, for her efforts in this, and we are pretty close. But the anticipation is that once things are set, each individual family, for each individual student, is going to receive an email that's customized, that's going to identify their bus number, their bus stop, the location of that, and the estimated time of arrival in the morning and then drop off in the afternoon. So this will be a little better than before. We're combing through the routes and trying to figure out what time it's going to happen. We're going to be able to get a little more specific data on that for families so they can plan accordingly. And like we brought up earlier, Here Comes the Bus is going to be utilized to help sustain that throughout the time. And certainly if any tweaks are made, the Here Comes the Bus app will allow that to be updated in real time. So that's certainly something we're going to watch and, and rely on as part of our communication plan. The implementation itself did require the review of the routes, a real deep look at that. This is one of the silver linings of COVID. Over the course of this year, we've had to really look hard at transportation from a variety of angles. So we've become very accustomed to looking, revising and changing the routes. So this is not different. We're looking at it just through a little different lens when we're doing the logistical review of when school is going to start for all of the ten schools, not just here at Algonquin. And then one of the other layers of that, and we're talking to Principal Bevan about it and more so with the middle schools, is having our, our sixth graders on buses with twelfth graders, which is very unlikely. Looking at our ridership data, we know that by the time students are getting to eleventh grade, they aren't taking the bus very often. And if so, they will, you know, and we've heard this from other districts, they're not going to be sitting with sixth graders. That type of stuff is, is not going to happen. But it is a concern for our community and we want to make sure we address it properly. So in collaboration with the administration here at Algonquin and for the middle schools, we're going to be monitoring it closely, checking in with our students and monitoring, you know, what's happening on the, on the buses. The other benefit is we have cameras on the buses now. So we can, we're not going to just take someone's word for it. We're going to be able to actually see, get actual data on that. So we're hoping that that's not an issue. When I was principal at Trotiere, way back when, we merged the Neri and Trotiere students together on the same bus tier. And we thought it was going to be very traumatic and it wound up being one of the better things we did because we were able to get some mentoring involved. We did have a couple incidents. It wasn't incident-free, I can say that for doing it for so many years. But it wasn't a big obstacle and I don't predict this one to be as well. So we're really looking forward to what that's going to translate for. The other piece that's sort of connected to that is Algonquin was always on its own tier of busing, meaning that the buses went out, picked up Algonquin kids and brought them here from both communities. Now they're going to be picking up the middle school students in the morning as well as the Algonquin students, dropping them off at Melican in Northborough in the morning, Trotiere in Southborough in the morning and then heading, heading up to Algonquin for the later start time. And that's something that's pretty, we're looking forward to seeing how that goes with traffic patterns and all the other things that get involved with that type of thing. But we'll, we'll learn pretty quick. Principal Bevan and I and Assistant Principal McGowan have already spoken about, okay, if this happens, what are we going to do? If this happens, what we're going to do? So we've already started that conversation. We're hoping that we can be planful of that. After a little bit of a break, we'll, we'll dive into that in early August. And the balancing of the routes, just like with any year, there's going to be some tweaks and changes and we're going to try to be as accommodating as possible, which does kind of roll into the analysis of this. You know, this year, we've had to be very responsive to people's needs. We have some families that have changed their bus needs three or four times in a month because of their personal situations related to work, being home, being remote, not being up and down. So we've had to be very responsive to those needs and we've had to account for every student because we had guidelines we had to follow with assigning seats, making sure we weren't hitting capacities. So this is something we've become very accustomed to during COVID and that will be extended through the start of this implementation of a later, a later start time. And then when we start digging deep, and this is where, you know, the analysis part of this comes in. And we've gotten this recommendation from the other committees is to really collect some good data on ridership. Certainly the routes and tracking of those is going to be very important. And making sure that everything is being executed in, in the right way is going to be critical to it. So I, we do have pieces in place that are going to allow us to do that. But I think we're going to learn very quickly, you know, what's working well and what's not, and then making, making the adjustments as necessary. The other piece I wanted to mention is the collaboration with NRT. North Riding Transportation has been excellent. They're eager to get this started. We already have a meeting scheduled with drivers for August on when we're going to, you know, finalize everything, give them an opportunity to kind of get out there and simulate their routes and give them any input. The hope is that because they were so involved in the route development this year, we're not going to have the need for, oh, I'm not going down that street or I can't do that. Those have all been dealt with this year with, with the COVID changes. So we're really looking forward to rolling the routes out to the drivers and having them be comfortable because they're the first line of this. They're, they're the first face our students see in the morning and we want it to be a good experience. So that might be a little more important for a kindergartner than a twelfth grader. But still nonetheless, I think it's important to mention that's the work that's being, we're going to. And to finalize things, this is how it's going to, how it's going to roll out. If, to look at the change and the adjustments, we're going to be dropping the students off in Southborough, at Trotiere and at Melican in Northborough first, and then heading up to Algonquin for an eight o'clock start. So that is, that is the plan. Any questions? Paul?
So if I could, you know, there's help wanted signs all across America. And bus drivers are not any, you know, they're not immune from that. I mean, what's the NRT staffing situation like? Are they, are they, I mean, I think they picked up Framingham as a new client this, this coming fall. And, you know, we have things in place to kind of monitor their staff levels through July and August so that we're not surprised in Labor Day.
I absolutely, that, that's a great point. I just had that conversation with their administration two days ago. You know, where are you, what are you expecting, anticipating? And they are anticipating that all their drivers will be back. We've been able to retain our drivers for the Northborough and Southborough routes. But, you know, very little turnover compared to the other districts they work with. Ours are, are very stable and they're not anticipating that to be changed. Probably a few here and there would be the normal turnover we are expecting. So we're not expecting anything different than that, so.
I've redeployed staff to other, other accounts of the town.
That doesn't appear so at this point in time.
I think what, one thing that happened was the work that the school committee did around supporting NRT during the pandemic. They didn't lay off drivers. Many of the districts that are struggling with drivers, they laid off drivers and now they can't get them back. So we have longstanding drivers who've been with us for many, many years and have continued, will continue with us. So we're hopeful.
Okay, thanks.
So as far as when you drive off a truck, like, I guess it's like a Southwater question. Is it still going to be north, north and south sides of Route Nine, like as far as your bus routes go?
For, for the late buses or?
For like the high school buses?
It, it does appear that way, yes.
And then are they going to take, are they going to practice these routes beforehand?
They, they are. So way, the way it's working out now, we're hoping that eighty to ninety percent of the route that they're doing tomorrow is what they're going to do in September. Our hope is that we can then, you know, we might have to change a few stops here and there. But the real, that was the real power of the work they did this year. These routes are completely vetted, so they know where they're going. So they might not be maybe, they might be using their Melican route to pick up now the Algonquin kids. Or vice versa, they'll use their Algonquin route to pick up the Melican kids. So we're hoping the merger of those routes will be accustomed to them as drivers.
I'm actually a little jealous that like this is getting me out just because, I mean, now I have college kids home. We're going to be at six o'clock in the morning to go to work.
I was going to say, it's going to affect the parents too. We're going to have more sleep too.
Yeah, well, and you know, I've had a plenty of conversations, not so much with high school parents, more with the elementary school parents about how it's going to impact their worlds. And, you know, they've, they've needed to walk it through and talk it through. And Jean and I have been available for those conversations. So you're telling me that they're going to be here then and there now? I'm like, yeah. And then we walked it through and they're like, okay, we can do that. It's a little different than what we were expecting, but.
It's on the conversation too, probably, if I was a high school parent, is, I know it's changing, but like hopefully their sleep habits don't change with that, which is going to be, you know, I mean, so I don't have to wake up now until seven, such a time, so I can stay up until two o'clock. You know, it's like.
And that'll be part of the analysis and really connecting with the kids on what they're actually doing and hoping we get an honest take.
Yeah.
Keith had a question. So Trotiere, Melican, again and now roughly fifteen minutes before the high school. Does that mean they're picking up at Trotiere, say, going to the high school and then going home?
Yes, that was, that's the original plan. We're trying to be creative on how to do that. So our Southborough students aren't on the bus for an extended amount of time. We're trying to reduce that. It, it is, but it wasn't as bad as we thought. When we thought we were going to be having routes that were well over an hour and, you know, extended amount of time, we found that not to be the case through the simulations. But again, it's when the computer's telling us, not necessarily what's actually happening. So we're trying to be creative and we think we're going to be reduced that impact by the time we're ready to roll out.
Okay.
Kathleen?
So is there any talk of the express bus that we once talked about?
So glad you brought that up. There is talk of express bus. So, and so part of the committee work that we did is exploring this creativity. So we do have a couple of ideas of identifying roads, especially in Southborough, that tend to be on the wings of the town and tough to get to, where they would be invited to have their bus stop at, let's say, the Woodward School. And they would have to be there to have to get a ride there to the Woodward School for, let's say, seven-twenty. And we'd have a bus there picking those kids up for seven-twenty and express right to Algonquin.
It's not a bad idea to offer like everyone.
Exactly. So, and then whether or not we hit capacity marks, depending what Desi tells us about capacity, can we invite others to do that? And then I just hope we don't, you know.
Open Pandora.
Uh huh, uh huh. So we're, we want to make it strategic so that we're helping our routes with it before we open it to convenience. So the first step is going to be, how does it help us with our routing? And then the second will be, you know, to help families.
So, so being a creative parent in the past, what would stop me? Right, if I, let's say I'm the first one, because I'm always the first one picked up in the morning and not me, but my kids. And so then they have to do the whole route until they get to Trotiere and then they shoot straight to Algonquin.
Yep.
So what's stopping me as a creative parent from just dropping my kid off at Trotiere?
We're not going to let you.
Okay, so you're not going to let people get on the bus at Trotiere?
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to avoid that.
Okay.
Emergency situations, obviously, we, you know, that's beside, you know.
Oh, you're going to have emergency situations every day?
Oh, we, well, we won't.
This is us. Yeah, okay. So that's the.
We've thought about that because I don't think Principal Hershak and the team, we can't handle that type of volume or that type of change.
Or chaos.
Yeah, that would be an added layer that we don't want to introduce.
Yeah, okay. And then the other question I had was about the, the measuring of the things on the first slide. So, and I'll just use concussions as a, as a, as a marker. In the past, we haven't done a great job of measuring them anyway. So are, do we have measurement mechanisms in place so that we can, you know, we got our baseline and so we'll know if we're doing better or worse?
That's a good question. You know, that, those are the pieces, I don't think we've dug deep on making sure we have those mechanisms in place. I don't think they're going to be very difficult to create because we are, we want to make sure that we're pulling that stuff out. But I, I don't think it's going to be very challenging to create those.
Okay, I just say, let's get the baselines.
Let's get it, let's get it, yeah.
Let's get the baselines because I think some of these are going to be great improvements.
I hope so.
And we should have those. And we should have those.
Well, some of the social emotional learning data that Mike spoke of earlier, that panorama data.
Yeah.
Would help create baselines.
Yeah.
If we can get that going early.
And are you going to use, use surveys?
Yeah.
Survey the heck out of those kids?
Try. Kathleen?
Just because we had the physical education programming this evening, the presentation, it would seem wonderful to wrap this data into their reflective learning process about sleep and why this happened and to, to tie that in in that multi-tiering.
Great idea.
Rather than have it be in a, just a strictly administrative overview.
Right, I think that'd be a good one. Sean?
Is there, is there been any look at the shift of, what, the shift of incoming traffic from seven thirty to, or from earlier seven, I'd say, to eight o'clock will be? Is there any, or is it just, you think it'll just be a shift and won't?
We think we're going to avoid the major traffic jam of, you know, the seven oh, what, what do we, seven oh five to seven fifteen?
Seven oh five to seven fifteen, that's, that's tough.
We're hoping to avoid that.
Yeah.
So like through communications, that principle, we're, we're going to try to say, listen, if you are train, if you are coming to school by way of a personal vehicle, please try to avoid this window. And, you know, there's going to be certain things we've done. We've done them through COVID in the other buildings. So the hope is that we can minimize it so the buses can get in and get out.
I'm, I'm just thinking of the natural, how it might affect.
Oh, okay.
Like a shift of a half hour of, of traffic in terms of like, I don't know what the traffic is like at Northborough at that time.
It's, it, it has been so, since things have been, you know, people have been coming back to work. We haven't had a, a ton to look at. So we did look back at, you know, last year and just kind of more anecdotal conversations, felt we were going to be okay.
Yeah, okay.
You know, we're still, I mean, when the kids are picked up now at six thirty in the morning, there's not many people on the road. But even through this and through the last month or so, the volume has increased, but it hasn't, it hasn't been an obstacle for the other buildings.
Obviously, it's one of those things just to monitor and.
Right, yeah, we're going, that's one we're going to be monitoring closely.
Anything else?
Just getting into the parking lot.
That's, that's what I'm most concerned about.
Don't have her hand raised?
Negative.
I think we're all set then. Thank you, Keith.
Welcome.
Onto the Coalition for Equity update.
So Rota Webb will provide an update on the work of the coalition this year.
Keith, you all. You're good, Rota, you're in. You're in. You can go to your presentation now, yep.
Rota, if you just close the, click on the built-in retina, click on the two boxes.
Oh, yes, okay.
Close that.
The box is here?
Yeah, one of the, close on that one, yep.
Oh.
And now you should be good.
Now the screen's all black.
I think, if you go to, go to the Apple Preferences, sorry, I'm just going to, Apple System Preferences. And then Desktop Screen.
Display.
Display.
Stop here?
Nope.
No.
Sorry.
Displays, display, left corner, down on the left.
Displays in the font. And then, yep, Unravel.
It was that?
Yeah. A little close.
I commend you for having so few windows open.
Keith, if you go to Arrangement.
Oh.
Keith, and then, yeah. And then check, there you go.
That is the biggest bugger.
I know.
Over and over again.
It's just a little bit. All right. Well, good evening. Um. That's it, but I'm not seeing it on the screen.
Can you go down?
She probably does want it mirrored. She just couldn't find it.
All right, we'll see. All right, so thank you for, we're going to give an update on, is this, is the right place? Yes, it is, on the Coalition of Equity. And with us today, Kummo Sivarejan is with us virtually, and she'll be joining our presentation, as well as Mariella Duggan is here, and Stephanie, and Greg, and Kathleen. So as you heard Greg say in the previous, in the combined meeting, the district's strategic plan, strategic plan number two, Equity for Opportunity, is empowering, is providing all our, making sure that all our students have the best education possible and successful experiences with cultural responsive pedagogy. So that's highlighting strategic plan number two. So the Coalition on Equity, which started this year in the fall, this is what we were tasked to do, which was build community partnerships focused on issues of equity across our districts, and to also to create the conditions to have courageous conversations around all aspects of equity in our schools and in our, which also affects our families and our students. And also identify and develop resources that support the students' learning and take action on that. So the goals of the presentation are to talk about our equity. Coalition, give an update of our key accomplishments this year and our future work. These are all the members, we started with thirty-three members, and you can see that it was a partnership among students, educators, administrators, community members, and school committee members. And we want to thank all of them because many hours were devoted between meetings. We started meeting in October and met once a month, and then formed sub-working groups. And those were, groups worked in between our coalition meetings. And so we are really grateful for everyone's participation. One of the things that we did at every meeting, and all our meetings were virtual, which is very difficult to start building relationships and to truly get to know somebody in, in the virtual world. But we created time to be able to share our story, to be able to explain what brought us to the work of the coalition. And that took trust to start opening up and speak about why we're involved in the work of equity and interested in devoting our lives to, to our schools. And so I think Maya Angelou's quote reflects that, that if we don't understand the past and the role that we have played or where we stand in history today, we are not going to be able to move forward and make the changes that we need to make. And so these are the four working groups that we had this year. The work of the coalition will continue into next year. And we will give an update for each of the working groups that we had. So our first working group was a mascot study group.
And typically, I would give this update, but I bought, brought a guest speaker, Sean Bevan. If there's anyone who can speak to this, it's Principal Bevan.
It is on the agenda next after this, so would you like me to just talk about that?
Just give it over.
Okay, sure. So the overview is that since our last meeting, Greg and I have been speaking with three different outfits to, that can pretty much do a soup to nuts, review of our kind of engagement of our community and, and process of developing a new logo, a new mascot, and, and then launch into a logo development process that would involve a graphic design, the graphic design step, which I think people think of as, as really kind of the endpoint, but really the, the heavy lifting starts in the beginning part and engaging the community and, and all of those kind of elements. And so instead of going with just one as the sole group, we have really decided, after having interviewed, I've interviewed twice with each of the three organizations, it look, it appears that we're going to go with one group for, who has a real strength in that community engagement piece and is able to gather data, work with a group, is willing to, maybe even do that over the summer, is willing to do some of that work remotely and, and over Zooms, and has said they've had success there. Identify a mascot, that, that mascot options that can be voted on by our school, and then, then can hand off the, the choice to then a graphic design firm that can take it into the finish. So we're really looking at kind of bifurcating that process. And that is just a portion of it. And then simultaneously, a parallel process will, will begin this summer to developing the education piece. And, and there's elements there as well. We're looking, our first opportunity to really educate the community is where, is when our freshman orientation happens in August. We're going to layer in a piece, an element of that to, to begin to have students join our community by understanding our past and our, our history with, with a mascot and where we're heading. We're also looking at working with the area historical societies to develop a portion of our school that would kind of reflect our history, almost in like kind of a, I don't know, have artifacts from our history that, that somebody who could stand in front of it would be able to read through and experience what our history's been like. I'll be working through that over the, that's a summer project. I've, I've started the outreach to begin. And then the ultimate goal is that when this all comes together with the big reveal of our new mascot, that's another, yet another opportunity to then revisit and talk about the education piece on why this was a necessary step for our community. And then finally, there will be the, kind of the work to, to increase and boost and incorporate Native American culture and art and history into our curriculum.
Are you taking questions?
If I can, sure.
Ready to go about procedure, and I'm dog tired, I hope I'll be cogent. But, you know, in reading people's thoughts, so many letters were sent to us and really thinking what a mascot means, I'm wondering how you line up the core values, which I adore, with the predominance of a mascot representing athletics. Like, I don't think of the history Tomahawk team.
Right.
Or when I was at, we were talking about University of South Carolina, I don't think about my school of public health Gamecocks. They, they don't have anything to do with one another. And so I'm wondering about the criteria for this kind of representation because in, in many ways, I see that a mascot galvanizes a group, you know, a community around something. And the Tomahawk was described as fierce, it was described as a tool. Does that, any of those categories sort of help in this effort? I, I wonder about mascots even in the modern day world. I, I, when I first Googled it, to just look things up, the first thing that came up was selling merchandise. And, and I thought, well, you, you knew money had to be in there somewhere because it just always shows up. But I'm wondering how to represent where the world needs to go, which are the core values, and how that gets represented graphically, and how that gets represented on uniforms. And really, does it represent a school in its fullness when it's always primarily been a athletics representation? And I guess this is more just an inquiry, but I, I think that, I want to lean into some of those questions to really look at what the school and the community will live with for decades. I'm also interested through this process, and, and this probably isn't for now, just where we'll be going with the hurt feelings in the community. Because those, just because we retired it, it doesn't mean that that still doesn't exist and, and that doesn't help us in moving forward with these core values or as a community at large.
You know what, I don't, I don't want to derail the Coalition for Equity update with the mascot discussion completely. So, and it is on the agenda next, so maybe we can table that. Of course, it was a great question.
You can come back to that.
Maybe we'll table that until the next agenda.
A brainstorm, wow. Rota, back to you.
Back to you, Rota.
It's to me now. So I was part of the community partnerships working group that was led by Kathleen Valente. And our goal was to, our mission as this group was to strengthen the partnership with schools and the communities. We started by developing and deploying a survey to the middle schools and high schools to identify the best ways for us to communicate with the student body. We're going to, about what's happening in the school and the community at large. Next, we need to look into, to the community and what's going to be the best way to communicate with our communities at large. We've been partnering with the Northborough DEI Committee and Southborough Neighbors for Peace. That's one of our, the community partnerships that we're going to work on strengthening and begin to research for speakers for a speaker series that we can put on that will benefit the school body, the student body, as well as the community at large. And that's where we stand right now, is we have to disaggregate all of our survey data. We've had our committee, our working group meetings postponed due to other events that had to take place. That's our next.
Question? Question?
Sure.
So you don't know what the best way to communicate with middle school students is? I was curious.
It's a million dollar question.
No, I, I think it was like, we asked, the, the survey questions were, you know, how many emails do you get a day? What, do you look at your emails? How do your teachers communicate with you? What form of communication works best? So some of them were like TikTok, where like, no, we're not going to TikTok. For the community partnership, but you know, it was just getting their input as to what would be, if we wanted to communicate something that was going on for the benefit of everybody as part of this group, what would be the best way to get that information to our student body, to our parents, and to our community at large.
That is going to be the million dollar question.
Yes.
It's not email.
No, you know, and everybody, it just goes further and further down the email when it's not, supplements on the top of your way there right now. That's our job.
So policies, handbooks, and procedures. So this working group was tasked with really thinking about the policies and how policy impacts diversity, equity, inclusion, and the power of policy. So we did review the regional policy handbook. We identified a, each of us identified a few policies to take a closer look at. And what we determined was really, the power really is designing a protocol to evaluate our policies, really to think about our policies as they come up for revision or as we add new policies. So the group basically designed a protocol, which is a series of questions. And the goal is to share that with the policy subcommittees. So as the policy subcommittees completes its work, they'll be using this protocol to think about all of the, all the types of questions that will be important as it reviews a policy through the lens of diverse, diversity, equity, and inclusion. So the, the next step, I think, is to share, share the protocol with the policy subcommittees. And Kathleen is on that subcommittee as well, and Keith? And anyone else? Did I miss anything?
No. It's, it's, it's an overwhelming, not task, because it's a million tasks, but it's overwhelming, yeah.
it's overwhelming, yeah. But we're gonna do it.
Thank you. Kumoo, are you with us?
Do you want me to introduce curriculum instruction first? Oh, please, yes, sorry.
Can you see me, hear me now?
We can hear you Kumoo, but can you hang on one second?
Sure.
Thanks.
So before Kumoo begins, the third subgroup was curriculum and instruction and thinking about how we could influence or support issues of equity through curriculum and instruction. The first time this group came together was, is first of all, a large group, lots of interest and, but realized that this was a vast, there were so many ideas, the end directions people wanted to go. So we broke into three groups. One group was, looked at diversity statements, one group looked at resources, and another looked at tools and rubrics. So Kumoo is going to start us off telling us what she and Kamali and Rhoda worked on with diversity statements.
Sure. Thank you, Stephanie. So my name is Kumoo Simarajan. I'm a Southborough parent and an active volunteer in the community. My daughter just graduated from the high school and they, I'm going to be a junior. So it's my pleasure to be here tonight. So when the curriculum and instruction working group was asked to enter an idea to develop deep racial and, racial and socioeconomic awareness, one of our thoughts was to develop a diversity statement. I still remember when we were in the thick of this matter last summer, one of two companies that I thought came out very quickly was College Bowl with like white bonds on the black body, the difference which I thought was impressive and effective, timely. Anyway, from that idea was a small sub-subcommittee like Stephanie mentioned, including Rhoda, Kamali, Umeela, and myself. We thought it's best to look at the places that have done this type of work already and decided to look at both private and public sector, operations, and how close we can be. We started with the reputable organizations ranking like EB, Niche, News, News, Forbes, Swatch, et cetera. But we just did go by those only. Done, even researched a lot before picking with the set criteria, these sets of criteria. Finally, we chose three companies, five schools and school districts, and one university. After choosing though, we spent a ton of time analyzing how strong that is the commitment statement, how serious are they, how committed and authenticity of what's working and what's not, how are they achieving their commitment and putting passion, what can give them, and what can tell, make it better, yet able, if they can, we can do too. And so for example, when we just wanted to see the, in a sense of how they are practicing or just keeping it for their, sorry, their goals. One of the places we looked at for the academy now is, was the upper schools. Their statement, what we thought was, it looked great and also powerful, but how, how, how are they practicing? Just they have dedicated a pool office for DEI direct by Jonathan Cuddy from 2000, I think like they now write a 2019. So it is, this is where all this we could go, like when it comes to the statistics. It's not that just a strong, you know, like it looks nice in the statements, but are they giving higher positions for that, you know, limit, dignity, different disciplines, like across the board, human, different. This is how our research went deep. They'll think, okay, so now all our work is put in a summary document, concise yet comprehensive, diversity statement of the, like it is a three column document, diversity statements of the places, and the person, why we picked the place, the reason behind it, and our thoughts and annotations and feedback, all that is put, you know, in a comprehensive way. Just also, we have rotated the phrase, what we think will make it a, it can't be like not welcome diversity, just not welcome, you don't just welcome the diversity, but like celebrating that. And it's our moral, it's like that we have rotated. We even went further and recommended visual impact of it too, like how to put it in the web slide, across the platforms, things like that. So it's more than the work is done, it's all the recipe to me is there. I can't wait to see the shape it takes. I'm really enjoyed in that, working with two other people. Yeah, that's the, that's the, that's our work, our work on a nutshell. I can take any questions if you have any, otherwise I would like to thank you for your interest and tie on this topic.
Questions? Think we're good?
Thank you, Kumoo.
Thank you, Kumoo.
Are you doing research for me? Okay. We've, for each school committee, it's changed a little bit, who's doing each part. So, that was one of those moments. So the resources group, which was also part of the curriculum instruction group, was looking to recommend lists of resources such as book lists that would support educators. And they were particularly trying to follow the professional learning topic this year that we've already discussed about windows and mirrors. So they identified and exist, they, what they realized very quickly is they did not need to create a list, that there are many, many lists that exist. So they basically curated lists that existed and annotated and have a summary document similar to what the diversity statement group did, highlighting lists, linked to lists, what they liked about it, what they saw as maybe weaknesses in particular lists, and have created this resource. The next group, the tools and rubrics, similar process, just a slightly different content. So what this group was doing was we were looking at, again, existing tools and rubrics that are used to evaluate curriculum, evaluate assessments, instruction, resources for bias and for culturally responsive responsiveness, I guess. The, with all of these groups, there is so much out there. So a little bit of a tip of the iceberg situation, but we worked with a lot of them. Again, we have a summary document referencing the tools that we looked at with what we saw as pros and cons in various categories. Some of them are for looking at libraries, some of them are for looking at units of study, different types. And then we did make one composite tool where we took some of the best features from several tools, and that one we're looking forward to piloting for looking at curriculum resources. For example, if you were thinking of adopting a textbook series. In the cases of both of these groups, I would say that we still have a little work to do to clean these up. And the work, and Rhoda and I have been talking about this, of how do we then make this accessible to our teachers? So that is some of our next steps that we look forward to.
Thank you. So here we go, next steps. So obviously the work of the Coalition is not done this year. We'll be going into next year. We'll continue to build those partnerships that Mary Ellen spoke about. We are also going to be inviting or adding more students and community members since not everybody can continue into the second year. And there are also members of the Coalition who will be taking part in the district audit that Greg spoke about with Mass Insight. So we're grateful for all the work that was done this year. There's still a lot more, and we will continue our work into next year. So, thank you.
Any questions, comments?
Nice job.
Thank you, Rhoda.
Thank you.
And team? Brings us to the mascot renaming update. What's left of it.
Sean did a great job kind of giving an overview, but in your packet is a proposal to create kind of a working timeline to finally determine what the next mascot is. Sean's been doing a lot of great work around looking at partners to help us with his work. And I think, as he mentioned, we identified one partner to help us with the process. And to your point, Kathleen, around how do we develop a symbol that really represents comprehensively who we are as a high school, not just in athletics, but all aspects, fine and performing arts, and so forth. So we, we think we have a really good person who has experience with that. And so Sean actually, and I talked about, it's probably best that Sean not lead this work, and that we have an independent third party person. So we've actually have asked Keith the way to kind of lead this work. And the first process will be to establish a study group. And also, think about the criteria that will evaluate whatever symbol or mascot that's created. So again, whether it's the core values, other attributes that are important to, to us, so that whatever symbols or mascot that comes forth, we can align it to our core values and say, yes, it meets it or it does not, and move it on. The goal will be to identify three mascots, three potential symbols that we will bring to the school committee for approval. And once we get the approval of those three, then it will be brought to the student body for a vote. And then, as Sean mentioned, we, Sean has worked with a couple companies to see what they, they have in terms of design. The design is, is free. And really creating a graphic, you know, package that really kind of mark, you know, markets Algonquin for its great, you know, programs that it does have, not just in, not just in athletics. So that is the plan.
In question, the composition of the study group is heavily athletic centric. And I, I think it really makes that point. You know, I don't see any faculty, well, I see one faculty member, but it's student athletes, some non-student athletes, but it, it certainly seems like it's driving toward athletics. And again, I, I think it's a conundrum.
Yeah, I think, so Kathleen, I just, we did think about that. We tried to make sure what, you know, we had a balance of, you know, fine and performing arts and, you know, athletics. So that I think, and Sean, correct me if I'm wrong, to the six students were really, were, we were trying to get from a wide variety of, not just, you know, fine and performing arts musicians, people in drama, and so forth.
And generally, no student is one, is just one. Often, many do many different things. And so our ability, you know, our goal will be to try to get a really representative sample. That it's not just in athletics, it's not just representative the interests of our athletes. Karen?
So the, the study group, I just, I worry about the timeline. I, I just, my first gut reaction is it seems rushed. And to Kathleen's point is, you know, we just rip the Band-Aid off, it seems. And I worry about the study group over the summer with students and what about the rest of the students? And that's just my initial gut. I just, I just don't want to rush into, and I know you, it's, you're recommending two or three for the students, but I don't know. That's...
It's a bit like getting married right after you get divorced.
Yeah, I just, I don't know.
I, I, I too wondered about the timeline and just like, it seems like a good amount of work's going to happen during the summer and making sure, you know, we did hear quite a bit from the community making sure the students were included and had a voice in it. And summer work is challenging to get, you know, groups together. So I don't know if there's any thought to, I mean, because this concludes in November. Are there any budgetary timelines that we need to know or printing timelines, you know, anything that could shift it? Is there a reason November versus later?
Well, I think that, so we did have the same types of conversations around, you know, are we rushing it? Is it going to feel like, you know, that transparent process that we heard about from the community? And one of the things that Sean, and Sean, you can speak to, tried to backward map when, you know, when we'd have a new mascot and when we could actually think about, you know, providing opportunities for that new mascot to symbolize Algonquin, whether it's gear, you know, the school store. We were trying to aim for that November, December timeline.
Yeah, we were thinking in the absence of any other, any, any other deadline except for ones we determine on our own, December seemed like a good opportunity for, for the winter holidays. If we were to have a new mascot and we could kind of do a big launch and a big reveal around a time where families might be interested in, in outfitting their child and family. And, you know, we could do it, it could be January, it could be February, but that just seemed like if we were going to work backwards, that might make sense. And it seemed to be a timeline that in our initial conversations with, with the outfits we're talking with, that's, that's a reasonable, a reasonable way to come at it.
I will say, I encouraged them to use the summer because I didn't see why we should just not do anything for, for two months. And, you know, I, I'm anxious to get this done, so.
And in my conversation with, you might recall the, the name Heard Strategies and Storytelling is a, is a group we were consulting with. They're the, the group that is, seemed to be the best fit for us. Jake from, from that outfit tells us that it's not quite as intensive as the mascot study group for retiring it. You don't have to do three hours of, of research and then a great deal of unpacking. He said it's roughly three to four, one, one or a little bit more than an hour meetings each to generate ideas, share them along, get a survey together, implement the survey, and then you have a period of time where they take in the survey, the results, they unpack it, they develop a reportable back to the group, bring it back to the group. It doesn't seem as work intensive, labor intensive as the study group was from November to, to April for the folks who were on that, which I don't want to indicate it's a thin process or that it's, it's quickly done. I think a lot of the hard work is in the unpacking of the data, which is actually completed by the, the outside group. Kathleen?
I'm interested in how much merchandising money does this, does the gear pull in to the school?
Oh, I don't, I don't know. And that wasn't my, that was not the compelling factor is more.
So Heard, Heard Strategy is, so they would just help us with the process.
Yeah.
They do design as well. You know, Heard Strategy would just help us with the process. And that's where we leaned on that organization's expertise and experience around how long does this take? And, you know, we asked the questions around summer. The varsity brands, again, the graphic design is, is free, like, and there's no commitment, there's no to have to buy anything of theirs. And again, we would, you know, we would go through the process of, you know, when we waterfall uniforms to varsity JV and we purchase new uniforms, they would have the new logo. Or, you know, the school store would start selling new gear. But there's no commitment on our part.
I was thinking about the timeline because you were mentioning November, December, almost as if they would be, the new logo would allow for gift giving from the store.
Yeah.
Was there, you know, a, a nice monetary window that we would miss by moving beyond that?
My thinking in that was more that it would be an opportunity to generate more enthusiasm and more buy-in and less about the kind of funds we'd raise as a result.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments?
Any other questions, comments? So we do need to appoint a member from each town to the committee as well as, I guess, vote to establish. Anybody want to serve?
I nominate Kathy Keating.
I'll second that.
Yeah.
Clearly Kathleen Howland is very interesting.
So all right, Kathy Keating.
You want to do something else?
No, I'm good.
I mean, I, I go. Is it, is this going to be virtual?
Here and here is.
Yeah, I think these meetings will be virtual, so.
Karen, you're good.
Yeah, I'll do it.
Excellent, thank you.
And I think too, as we move through the process, like everything, this is a dynamic. We might, you know, come to learn that, yeah, it's too, too rushed and we need to slow it down.
Do we need a motion to establish the committee? I move that we establish a mascot naming committee.
Sounds good. I second.
All right, moving to second.
Is there a bunch of opportunity for comments? So for the students that are non-athletes that are involved, um, given that this is under the D E I, I would love to see as many, um, non-typical North Borough, we can, now see, I'm really running out of words. Um, that there really be diverse, that there be people from other countries speaking other languages who, who are coming in and shaping this future. I think it would be a real mistake to, um, not give them the microphone.
I feel like the study group itself, though, was very diverse.
It was.
So I don't think, I understand your point, but, but I feel like Sean did such a great job with that that I don't think there's going to be an issue with it.
Yeah, I will say that I have trusted this process. It's just underneath this envelope and, and as I had done this research and really thought about what the value is and what, um, what it does represent. I mean, you know, could you have a graphic of somebody helping an elder across the street? It just doesn't galvanize people, right?
But I mean, but every, and you have to, I mean, everyone coming to the school, though, like that's, and you were talking about the game clocks, and I know that that's like.
And I use both. I used it as a compound now.
And I am a parent of a game clock, so, and I have lots of, lots of stuff that I can't mention all over, you know, the, the clocks, the game clocks, you know, the, the t-shirts, whatever. I did say it, and I would not allow my child to wear that school, that shirt, a trawdier.
Thank you.
Twelve series. But, you know, and, and I understand that representing the school, but it's also like, it's, it's the, it's the child, the student's feeling of them being the school too. It's not just an athlete, it's whoever's at that school. I mean, it's just how you're, you're part, you, of a community together. You know what I mean? Like it's, it's not just, you know, being an athlete or being a musician or being whatever. I think it's, you know, you want, it's everyone being part of the same. You know what I mean? Like you want to leave that school and say like, you know, like proud of like where you went to.
I guess it leaves me wondering. It really leaves me wondering, um, you know, I have no identity as a game cock.
Right, I mean, I have a pro or I have a tiger or I have a game.
Or as a Mohawk from Millis, it just, it, it never crossed my mind. It, it wasn't a good fit. So, you know, it is, it is quite a challenge. There's no doubt about it and times are changing. And, um, I'm wondering whether we can get ahead of the curve of where this, this might be going because there are so many communities that are also doing this. But I trust Karen's sensibilities to represent my sensibilities in this. And I appreciate you taking this on.
Thank you.
As well as Kathy Keating.
As I said, in the mascot study group, I see it more as an opportunity than a challenge. I mean, it is a challenge, but it's an opportunity to come up with something that, you know, people can actually rally around, so.
And I will say, I mean, I would assume that some of the students who are on the original committee might want to still serve on this, I don't know, I'm just.
Maybe.
Who knows?
I don't know.
I think regardless of what happens, this, you know, we have to take our time.
Yeah.
This will endure for many, many years.
Yeah.
And, um, and I think we have to take it seriously. It's, you know, it's hopefully in 50 years, the next group of people leading this organization will look at it with great pride and it will still be here, whatever it might be.
Or is there something that represents the athletics in the fierceness they want to project? And then there's something else that represents the school community. You know, it just, it does feel like there's a big divide in my mind.
I, I think that's the challenge of the committee is to represent, that was part of, we wanted to represent the values of the community and not, uh, parts of the community. And the fact going through the history and finding out like that the seniors would vote another, a, a different one every year. So it clearly represented themselves so that the, you know, that the students will be involved in this and have an ultimate say, um, I think helps with buy-in. And, and then how it's used continually throughout the school. And, and not to separate is, I, I think, you know, the carry, carry through on how, how it will be perceived.
So I just have a question because, um, this is, I'm not going to be involved in any of these discussions this summer. So when you're designing, so when you have the three, uh, options and you're, and you're surveying the students or the community, whoever, is it feasible to have a fourth, uh, uh, line item that says none of the above? And, and I recognize that that's fraught with, you know, peril, but I guess my point to Kathleen is that we, we, one of the things we want to know is, do none of these represent how I would feel? You know, is representative of how I would, you know, associate myself with this whole group of Algonquin? So, so I just think that's important data to have, that's all.
My sense from talking to Heard Strategies is that it's, it's a process of winnowing down and, and they ask for lots of input from as many stakeholder as, as can, as you can imagine. And, uh, and including what kind of suggestions they may have for, for the new mascot. They've told us that half of the suggestions will be the Tomahawk. Like there'll be lots of people who will say that will be a moment for yet another, like, opportunity to say, I'm unhappy about this change. And they said, just be prepared for that and, and I now am. And then they say, then you get from twelve, they'll narrow the field from, you know, 12 realistic possibilities to six to five, and then they match those against, and then you get down to a period. Uh, uh, three that they know are viable, realistic, uh, will be embraced by the community. And then you get to the point where you can have it to be a vote. I don't think that what you're suggesting would be likely what they would suggest as a route because I think they say, if you can get to the point where you have 12 and they're all realistic and they match the values, you're, you're kind of insulating yourself from a, like a no, no confidence vote in, in the, the top three.
Absolutely, and I didn't appreciate that you started with 12 and went down, so.
Oh, okay.
My apologies if I wasn't.
No, no, that's quite right, I can explain that.
Okay, we have the motion on the table to establish the study group. So, uh, roll call vote, Kathleen?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Kathy's yes, Kathleen?
Yes.
Joan, are you with us?
Yes.
Very good. And I'm a yes as well, it's unanimous. Thank you, Keith, for heading that up. Athletic complex update.
So I will be brief.
It's already passed my bedtime.
Yes. So as you know, the athletic complex has been a conversation over the past many years. Most recently, the boosters, um, graciously, um, funded a study, a conceptual study. And we developed plans and schematic designs and drawings. I have had conversations with, um, Mark Purple and John Cadera around really taking a, a close look at, um, updating our athletic facilities and the town's role in that work. Um, and I'm just asking for the committee's support to really take a more earnest look and, and having the, the school committee, um, potentially looking at this as a potential warrant article in, um, the spring of next year, potentially. But a lot of work around planning, thinking about what that would look like.
This conversation's been going on for like 10 years now.
And the boosters has, have been having the, the conversations, which is great. But I think shifting it from the boosters to, to the school committee to deciding on what that should look like.
Sorry, Paul? I'm sorry. Yeah, I'll be, I'll be quick, but, uh, the issue that will come up in Southboro will be, I think, you know, we don't, if you just take a look at the student population and say, here's our assessment, here's Northboro's assessment, they're not going to want to pay that percentage for an athletic complex that when the high school's not using it, is used only by Northboro teams, you know, I think will be, will be the undercurrent that would attack that potential warrant being, being approved. That ought to be something that gets discussed.
Yep.
You know, the, the.
How do we navigate that?
The spread of that money might need to be a little different. Because if the fields are there and they're not being used by the high school, you know that people in Southboro are going to want to use them, I don't blame them, they'll be nice fields.
Can they not use them? I don't.
Well, you have to put a no trespassing sign up on, you know, I don't know that we'd want to do that, but.
It's just far away, too.
But I think it's, it's also having conversations with the youth organizations in both communities.
Absolutely.
You know, there's no shortage of, uh, lacrosse, football.
Lacrosse has no threshold for lacrosse.
But I just think, I guess, what I'm asking is really for us to take an earnest look, come up with a plan.
Long overdue, but I think, I think the money needs to be part of the discussion. It's just sitting down with Purple and Cadera.
I don't need a vote, I just get a consensus.
Consensus?
Absolutely. Okay. Policy development, distribution, none at this time. That brings us to audience sharing. Is there anyone who wants to share?
We're, we're clear, Paul.
Alrighty then. Personnel, distribution of personnel report, it's in the packet, I assume. Communications, none at this time. Approval bills and payrolls is online. Agenda items for next month. We have information technology, network security update. And 21, 22 subcommittee liaison assignments, I think we're done with that. Anything else for next month? I mean, no, September.
Can we talk about that being executive session for the security?
So, um, I have scheduled a meeting with Morris, I talked to him today. We're going to do a Zoom call next week. So I, I think based on the outcome of that conversation, we can decide if want to move it to another conversation with, with that executive session.
Anything else for next time?
We have three months to live.
Well, you got a few months.
This is, okay.
All right then, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
It's a move.
Second.
Re-discussion. Roll call, Kathleen Howland. Karen?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Kathy? Kathleen? Joan? And I'm a yes, we are adjourned. Have a good summer.
Good night, Joan.
Good night, Joan.